Tonight, last night, we started with the general overview of the revenue forecast for the upcoming fiscal year 19 budget by Mr. Dunkley, our Chief Financial Officer. Then we had the departments that are categorized as the organizational capacity departments, and those departments are the ones that support the operating departments that actually implement the strategic plan of the City Commission that you'll see tonight and tomorrow night. Just quickly, in case you're wondering what is up on the screen, this will be the proposed organizational chart for the city of Deerfield Beach. We are moving away from your typical governmental bureaucratic nonsense of a rigid organization to focus not on departments, but to center, put the citizens in the center of everything we do, which is quality of life, safety and readiness, prosperity for businesses, as well as for residents, sustainability and infrastructure, and of course, the organizational capacity to support those four core strategic goals set by the City Commission. The reason why we've done this is, again, not only do we want the citizenry to be at the center of everything, but we also are pushing to get rid of this departmental silo mentality that has hurt the city for the past several decades. And we don't want any of our tribe members to just focus on they work in ocean rescue or they work in parks and recreation. We want them to focus that they're there for safety and readiness, or to improve the quality of life of citizens. So this just isn't a symbolic chart. This is actually going to be the culture that City Commission came up with during the strategic plan and implementing it throughout the city. So with that, Mayor Gans, if I could introduce the Assistant City Manager, who will be responsible for the quality of life and prosperity responsibilities.
Actually, before we do that, sorry, just to explain for those who might not have been here last night from the public, the budget workshop itself that we're having is a little different than what we've had in the past. This isn't a wish list being presented by the department heads with budget, with cuts made later by the, and recommendations made later by the City Manager. At this point right now, these presentations and what's being presented is part of the recommend, which will be the recommended budget by the City Manager. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct.
So that is a little bit of a different change than what we've done in the past. So the numbers that we hear tonight is what would be presented to us unless there are some changes based on what this work, comes out of this workshop. What we'll do at the end of the meeting, based on the itinerary, is we will have public input at that point, in which people can come up and speak on any of the items that are discussed here tonight. So I think we've tried to stall it late enough, long enough for Commissioner Drosky, so we're gonna let you move forward. That's all right.
Just one other thing, we are videotaping tonight's public workshop like we did last night and tomorrow night, so if you weren't here last evening, or if you can't make it tomorrow evening, they will be available later this week online, as will the presentations be available. And just, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
And just one other key point from last night, I didn't realize that's what you wanted me to discuss, but we will not receive the final revenue estimates from the property appraiser until July 1st, give or take, and then from the state of Florida till somewhere between July 15th and July 30th. So expenditures, as I indicated last evening, they, right now, this is what I'm recommending, but if revenues come in lower than what's been forecasted, then I'll have to make those adjustments to bring forward a balanced recommended budget. If it goes higher, which we think, if it were to do that, it would only be slight, so we'd probably just bring that forward to go into the fund balance at this point.
Okay. And just a reminder to the public, please turn off your cell phones, silence them if you could, and we do have refreshments over there for all of you in the corner. With that, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So with that, if it would please the City Commission, I'll have Ms. Petty do an overview of prosperity and quality of life, and how we're going to stitch that together to make the city of Deerfield Beach more than just another municipality in South Florida. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Karen Petty, City Manager.
Can you speak into the microphone louder, sir?
Sure. Is that better?
Yes.
Tonight, we will be discussing the future plans for the departments and divisions that are within the prosperity and quality of life sectors of the strategic plan. Departments collectively work to unify the city as a place to work, live, and play. Planning and Development Services and Building and Inspection Services lay the groundwork for enhanced and responsible development. This is achieved in numerous ways, including progressive codes, land use, and zoning changes, streamlined planning and building processes, which result in long-term quality of variety of housing stocks and a viable business base. Code compliance seeks to ensure that properties continue to abide by the various codes put in place if the city remains high in curb appeals. Economic development then puts on the muscle. Creative retail strategies are used to recruit, retain, and expand business in order to further develop the city's revenue base. The focus for economic development is quality instead of quantity. We seek to have diverse business opportunities that meet the various communities' needs and unique character throughout the city. As we know, each neighborhood has their own little niche and their identities. We want to make sure that we keep that part of Deerfield Beach. The goal is to attract employers and ultimately have their employees reside within the city, thus reinvesting in it. To that end, quality educational opportunities are the number-one priority for employer recruitment. Unfortunately, the Broward County School Board does not seem to place enough emphasis on its public schools located in the northeastern portion of the county. Community development will continue to work with the board to ensure that city schools are a priority, but will also continue to look at other options such as charter schools. They will also continue their outreach to low-income residents with assistance with home repair and first-time homebuyer opportunities. Once the residents are here, the focus is on a good quality of life, so that prosperity stays within the city limits. It is our desire as a government to provide our residents and visitors with an abundance of thriving, beautiful green space in order to enrich their lives. We believe this philosophy starts in parks and grows in parks. Every season of life should experience quality recreational activities, especially our senior community, and our Center for Active Aging is where life continues to happen through the golden years. Once the circle of life is completed, we respectfully provide end-of-life services in one of our city cemeteries. Parks and Recreation and Active Aging should really be seen as one entity to city residents due to their similarities. Thus, the departments have been actively working together to provide programming. With over 100 days of events, various other programming, and healthcare, the departments have something for everyone in our diverse community. There is an overarching value of community outreach and assistance, promotion of health and wellness, as well as an investment into the educational development of both our youth and adults. To further this, we plan to utilize various community partnerships with entities such as Broward County and higher education institutions such as Nova Southeastern University to provide recreational and educational programming and opportunities, especially of the marine-based mind. From quiet waters all the way to the beach, we envision the city as a place to be able to go from east to west, vice versa, and be able to stop all along the way for a lot of recreational activities throughout our city. And we no longer think of boundaries such as districts, city, or county. Whereas boundaries divide us, we believe collectively providing services to one community as a whole will work towards uniting us. And with that, if I may call up Chris Mori, Director of Economic Development.
Sure. Let the record show that Commissioner Drosky is right.
My name is Chris Mori. I'm the Director of Economic Development. To my left, I'm pleased to introduce you to Gigi Chazou. She's our Economic Development Coordinator, and we're very pleased to have her on staff. I'm pleased that she could be here this evening. Thank you, as the City Manager mentioned, and not feeling all that well, but I'm hoping my meds will get me through at least this presentation. The Department of Economic Development is a fairly new department in the city framework, but I hope that you'll agree by the end of this presentation that we've got off to a great start. We are running fast, and since it's been City Manager's side, we really do have a lot of muscle in what we do, and I hope that you'll agree that we have a big impact on the city. The Economic Development Department is responsible for business attraction, retention, and expansion. And what does that mean? Of course, bringing new businesses to the community, but once they're here, keeping them here, keeping them happy, making them part of our fabric. And if they're happy, hopefully, they'll then expand. With the expansions, of course, is job creation as well as through attraction. So job creation is a big goal of ours as well. Along with that, and getting to the theme of prosperity, this tax-based expansion, last night you heard from the property appraiser about, you know, their role, but the Economic Development Department plays a very key role in expansion of the tax base, and we take it very seriously, literally, on a property-by-property basis. We look at the properties and see what we can do to maximize income, so that we can bring in revenue to provide services for the community. We're responsible for overall business climate enhancement, and what that means is that when businesses interact with the city, we want them to have a five-star experience. We want them to feel important. We want them to feel relevant, and more often than not, we want them to go on and do their business and have the city be as accommodating when need be, but as out of sight when need Our staff, of course, is quite small, but we consult with hundreds of businesses throughout the year, from large businesses like JM Family, all the way down to mom-and-pop restaurants. They all have needs, all those needs are different, and we try to service them as well as we can. There's never two days in economic development that are exactly the same. And of course, all this goes together to enhance the quality of life. We feel that by having a vibrant business community, good employers, good jobs for the people that live here, that that enhances our quality of life. Later on, we'll talk about our economic development strategy and how that's a really important thing that we're working on to improve in 2019 and years in the future. Of course, we undertake marketing and CRA management. Our Community Redevelopment Agency is also under this department, but we won't cover that tonight because that's a CRA group, needs separate from the City Commission. So I want to talk to you briefly about some of the first accomplishments that we've made now as a new department. I'll take you through each of these separately. This year, we entered into a contract with a consulting firm called Retail Strategies Inc. They are a nationally renowned firm that specializes in just that, retail strategies. One of the things that the city suffers from is a lack of good-quality retail businesses along some of our major corridors. And so we're working with Retail Strategies to come up with some, first of all, baseline information about our retail market. What do we have? What are we missing? Where are the opportunities? To look at what's called retail leakage, to find out where consumers who have a dollar to spend in Deerfield Beach are taking their money, and instead of spending it here, why are they spending it somewhere else? Also, some of these materials you'll see in the future, they're still in development, but the retail heat map, where is our market? Who comes to Deerfield Beach? And how do we connect with those people? And then finally, kind of the matchmaking, this is like the match.com of retail, right? So this consultant has, what they specialize in is relationships. They know the developers of Zaxby's. They know the developers of Olive Garden. They have all these relationships, and so what we hope to get through them is not only demographic information, but that matchmaking relationship. So in 2019, these are, there are three areas that we will start to really explore more fully. As Ms. Petty talked about earlier, housing is going to be a big one of them. You know, it's interesting that the city's economic development strategy focuses on two very important things, housing and education, not typically areas that you would see in an economic development strategy, but one that we have to address and will work on in 2019. And also, in 2019, we anticipate working with a lot more multi-family residential developers. There's been more of a trend towards that this year, and economic development staff participates in that as part of the tribe with planning, with Eric Powers' team, with community development as well. So I just thought I'd take you through a little bit of, this'll, I'll go through this quickly. In terms of retention and expansion, I'll just go through some of these, and you can just see some of the names that we have in the city. And these are, this is just a sampling of businesses that this department has interacted with so far this year. And as I said, some are big, some are small, but they're all here and they all need assistance. Some need two hours of our time, some need four weeks of our time. In terms of attraction, we've had, made some good strides this year as well, and I'll just go through a couple of them. There are some that we're still working on, that aren't ready to announce yet, but Crawford Tracy Corporation is new, Old Everglades Distillery, The Learning Experience, Ship Monk, which is literally like right in back of us, well, right behind The Learning Experience, Rafe Financial, Broward College we've been working with, the Oxford Group, Wawa, everyone's heard of Wawa coming into the city, General Provision, Nova Southeastern. This is just a sampling. We could, I could probably go on for 10 or 15 minutes with logos of companies that we've worked with to bring them into the city this year. The one thing with the addition of Gigi on our staff, we're really pleased, in fact, Gigi is, speaks four languages. She's certified in Spanish, and so this department has actually issued its first Spanish-language press release when we announced our opportunity zones. So we plan on doing that much more, so that we can really just be more inclusive in the business community. But in terms of technical assistance, we've been working with, these are some of the smaller companies that we've been work with, working with, and I'm sure that, you know, it wouldn't be surprising if you've never, ever heard of these businesses, but they're here. Many of them are advanced industries, and by advanced industries, that, to me, translates into good-paying jobs. So one thing that the department has really ramped up on this past year is regional, actually, this should probably say global marketing, because we just don't market the city regionally. Now, we go to state trade shows, we maximize my membership in the International Economic Development Council, and things like that. So this year, we've made a lot of partnerships. We are much, much more on the radar screen in the South Florida region than we were at this time last year, and we intend on just really, really keeping ourselves on the front, forefront of that, and very relevant in this region. So actually, Florida Executive Airport is one of the top five fastest-growing airports in the United States, and that's a relationship that we hope to mine in this next year. Of course, Rebecca might talk a little bit more about our interaction with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Urban Land Institute, the National Association of Industrial and Office Parks. One, the group that we've really ramped up our relationship is with the International Council of Shopping Centers. Last year I attended, and we're getting ready to attend again this year in August. We'll be traveling to Orlando. The ICSC Trade Show in Orlando features 5,000 participants, both mostly retailers, but investors and that kind of thing, so we can get Deerfield Beach face-to-face with people who represent tenants in shopping centers. South Florida Manufacturers Association is a new relationship for us. Another one is the Commercial Investment Marketing Group. We've hosted them last year, and we really hope to expand on that relationship again this year. The CCIM Group is your top-notch commercial brokers in this area, and they really are the movers and shakers of property. They know what's, what's available, who's moving, and we really need to make that relationship to keep us on the cutting edge of economic development. South Florida Technology Association, we've been trying to match up some people who are interested in starting up businesses with this group. And this logo may not look familiar, but this past year, the Realtors Association of Palm Beach has joined with Broward County, and we, again, participated in the Mayor's Breakfast. The Mayor did an excellent job representing the city, this time to the residential Realtors of South Florida and the Palm Beaches. We've begun a membership in a website called Opsites. We've been loading up maps and information on our special districts, Pioneer Grove, Dixie Business Corridor, Four Corners, to basically start marketing our districts for, to investors and developers. We've only had this site live for just over a month, and already, in a month, we've gotten contacts, direct contact, from 87 new developers and investors, and we've actually whittled that down to five real leads. And this is just what the interface on, online looks like, if you care to go and look at it yourself. In addition to this, of course, the economic development staff continues to cross-train and support the other departments of the tribe, especially in the area of planning. We participate with Eric's group as it relates to business district planning, and, as I mentioned before, also redevelopment. Just want to go through advocacy in special projects really quickly. We continue to staff the county's Platinum Programming, Platinum Permitting Program. And by this program, when projects come up that are of special importance, people can apply for expedited permitting, and our staff helps support that. This will actually become relevant in the next couple of months, as Broward County asks for expedited permitting for 911 telecommunications facilities. We talked previously about tax-based analysis. I conduct regular analyses in conjunction with the GIS Department to look at our tax base and to see where things are moving, where things are lagging, and to make recommendations to the City Manager about policies. FDOT, of course, has been a big one this year in terms of advocacy. On Southwest 10th Street, this department's been active in assisting the business community in terms of engagement on Southwest 10th Street. We don't talk about it much, but actually, Gigi's been really heading up an effort to ramp up the landscaping on I-95, specifically at the request of the U.M. Sylvester Cancer Institute, to give them some better visibility along I-95. Something that doesn't cost us anything, but it really helps them out a great deal. Roadway enhancements in general, and working to advocate for wayfinding signage verbiage. Sometimes when we deal with the state, they don't understand things like "the cove," and so we really have to fight to get those kind of names on signs. Also this year, this department did a lot of work researching with FP now, not just in terms of underground utilities in and of themselves, but on resiliency efforts, so that we can help the business community plan and become more resilient and prepared for future disasters or storms. One project we've been working on just recently is interacting with the United States Department of Economic Development Administration. It's a multi, again, a multi-department effort. We're trying to apply for funds that would be through the EDA for Economic Development to fund infrastructure, and the infrastructure then would be tied to bringing in new businesses for jobs. We're still scoping out that project at this point. We're also going to go back to Broward County. They have a Broward Redevelopment Fund, and we're going to try to scope out a project to go after that pot of money as well. They will have $8 million available this year. And then in terms of affordable housing, you know, we really are in startup mode on this, but the one thing I would say about affordable housing as it relates to economic development is this, right now, the county is trying to advance a policy of one-size-fits-all. And I think in Deerfield Beach, one thing is clear, is that as it relates to housing in general, affordable housing in particular, one-size's not fit all for our community. We are not similar to others, and so that's, this is one area that our department will be actively advocating. Oh, I was gonna say, had some little logos freedom there. So a new funding area this year would be, will be, we're requesting to fund the newly-formed Economic Development Council. This is not a new group. In fact, this group came from the City Commission almost three years ago now, and asked to be this voice of the business community, to advise the Commission on matters of interest, you know, from the business community. This is a group emanated from the Chamber. They've really got, gained some steam now. They are separate from the Chamber of Commerce. They are getting members on board. Dave Marantz is here, he's the Executive Director of the group. The Chair of this group is Bob Burdington from OK Generators. They have a great group of founding members. What this group is going to be is a private sector complement to what the city is doing in terms of economic development. By not being in the city, they can operate outside of sunshine, and that's particularly crucial when you're talking about private deals that are going on in commercial real estate. Their main goal is to market the city as a premium business destination. And I think what we've already seen coming to the forefront with this group is the spirit of peer-to-peer advocacy. It's one thing if a business says to another business owner, you know, "This is my experience." That word, those words coming from a business owner are much more meaningful sometimes than coming from a government employee like myself. So here we have Dave Marantz. Oh, I just forgot to mention, this whole fund, this, this group was started through the generosity of JM Family. They provided startup money for this group for, I believe, at least six months. So finally, I wanted to let you know about some performance measures that we're holding ourselves to. And you can see that some of the categories up top are new. These are things that we know that in terms of our economic development strategy, we'd like to track in the future, but we're just not, you know, we're not there yet. But we feel that that information would be really good to give back to the Commission, so you can see your return on investment in this department. Won't say much more about it, except for the numbers keep growing each year, we get busier and busier, but we still maintain a really, I think, a very good level of service. We return phone calls within 24 hours, and we just get really good feedback from the businesses that we assist. So our budget last year was $486,000, and this year, our budget request is $363,000. That's actually not a 25 percent, it's a 25 percent change, but it's a negative change. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. Thank you.
Commission comments? Questions?
Keep up the good work, and thank you for reducing the budget.
Yes.
Go ahead, Vice Sir.
First of all, I want to know what those other two languages are.
French.
French, so I can expect to see some brochures or something in Creole or French or whatever.
That's the plan, and actually, I can work with other languages as well.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Retail, it was one of these things that you talked about, Ms. Mori, matchmaking relationships. Are we planning on using that on Dixie Highway? I'm still not satisfied with progress on Dixie Highway, Mr. Powers, and I know we have some unique things going on on Dixie Highway, but I've been here four years now, it's almost time for us to put something in the ground, one way or the other. Except we have to take the lead on that, Mr. Manager. We need to do that in quick, fast, and in a hurry. Did I hear you say that the EDC is going to need funding?
Yes, they requested $50,000 in funding.
And I guess then my question is to Mr. Sirota, if it's an advisory board, can we give them funding to help with their tasks?
I mean, the CRA is distinct and separate from the city. Can you hear me?
Not the CRA, the EDC, the Economic Development Committee.
And what is the question? Do you want to provide them with funding?
If, if they're going to be advisory to the Commission, can we give them funds to do that?
I guess it would be specific to what purpose the funds are to be used for. We'd have to look into it.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's certainly up to sort of public purpose, that would be a bare minimum, but depending upon what the nature of the use of the funds are, we'd have to analyze and look at that.
And is that $50,000 included in the budget that you're asking for? And we still will achieve the 25 percent of... we still will achieve the twenty-five percent or twenty-three percent decrease?
So, just to answer the question, the EDC has indicated, submitted a budget to me. They've indicated that they anticipate spending this money on marketing and events, and yes, that money is included in the three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollar budget, and that is accounted for in the twenty-five percent decrease from last year.
And these marketing and events are going to be all over the city?
Yes.
Not just one set?
Thank you.
City Manager?
Thank you. Just quickly, the EDC is not an advisory board to the City Commission. They're an autonomous organization that has no ties to the city, other than it's a group of business owners or executives that have formed to help expand marketing and business retention and attraction into the city. So it, it's not like you're, like we have with the Cultural Committee or the Planning and Zoning. So they wouldn't necessarily be an advisory board. They may speak to you individually or to the board as a whole, but there's no linkage between City Commission, City of Deerfield Beach as an organization, and the Economic Development Council. So I just want to make sure that's clear for the public as well.
Exactly, because I heard advisory come, and I know that I've talked to the members, so some members of that committee, and I didn't get that impression that it was going to be advisory to the board, and that's why I asked the question of the...
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just... But the City Manager is absolutely correct. It's a separate, completely independent entity from the City.
Thank you.
Mr. Droskic?
What did you do to cut in your budget that gave you the savings in addition to the fifty thousand that you added?
So, one of the largest decreases was actually taken care of by our contract with retail strategies. Previously, we had thought that the price for this contract was going to be a lot more, but we were able to buy it down by piggybacking on a contract that they've done with other cities. And we've been able to spread it out over three years. So instead of paying a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for it in one year, like we had planned last year, we can amortize it over three years. So that was one area. And then also in terms of marketing, because we are marketing not just, previous year we had a separate marketing budget for Pioneer Grove and for Dixie Highway, and as Vice Mayor pointed out, we really need to beef up our efforts for Dixie Highway. So we have lumped those together into overall marketing budget for redevelopment in those areas. Thank you.
Can you go back to the slides that show the performance measurements? So you have an FY eighteen estimate, in other words, this is what you've estimated that you will, will have accomplished, or were hoping to accomplish?
That's a formatting error. It should say, there's actually a column missing from what I put in, but, I apologize, that is the fiscal eighteen estimate, there's a column missing with fiscal eighteen actual.
Okay, that would be important to have.
I apologize for that.
Well, actually, you would not have an actual at this point because...
To date.
Yeah, it would be to date, however, that's not an actual number to date. We do the estimate, which we feel is on track, Mr. Mayor, for the end of this fiscal year. So we feel that that's fairly accurate, does take year-to-date into account. However, we felt that doing year-to-date just did not make sense. We wanted to give you an estimate. And then, as we've done in the past, you know, because this is a new department, there's not fiscal year seventeen track, yet, so next year will be FY eighteen actuals, and then FY nineteen estimate, FY twenty targets.
Okay, what makes sense to me is that while if you want to give an estimate of where you think you're going to be at the end of FY eighteen, you should at least put in there what you've expected to accomplish under FY eighteen compared to what you think you're going to end up, so we can know whether or not this makes sense or not. When we get to FY nineteen, we can say this is what our goals are, and then we can figure out the performance measures, we can determine how we perform. So right now, I feel like I have a little bit of incomplete information for me to determine, you know, our success rate on that. So just, just to know if we could get that information, that would be great. We could have that.
Absolutely.
I have another question. You talked about housing, and basically, fall intensive purposes Deerfield is built out. We're not getting any more new land. When we talk about housing, what are we focusing on here? Multifamily, or what do we...
So, what we've seen in this past year is probably going to continue into at least the next year or two before we, you know, can anticipate some sort of slowdown. So what we've seen is infill development focusing on multifamily. So that's, you know, a trend that we see, and we expect it to continue. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Just before, as we have the next group, Mr. Power, I believe, coming up, just quickly, Mary Gans, we hear you on that, so in the budget will actually reflect year-to-date on the estimate, so for the document, and then next year we'll have year-to-date if the year what the City Commission would like. It's not a problem.
Yeah, I just feel if we're going to have performance measures, we need to know what we're comparing. It's great to say this is what our goals are, but we need to see what we actually accomplish when you're measuring up against.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Great? All right. So my name is Eric Power, I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services for the City of Deerfield Beach, and with me tonight to my right, your left, is Stephen Graham, our Assistant Director for Planning and Development Services. We also have Bernard Pita, our Code Supervisor. And tonight we have Chris Giordano, who's our Director of Management Services for Calvin Giordano Associates. Sheila Oliver, our Building Official, cannot be here tonight. All right, so the city, sorry, excuse me, the department does have a vision statement to plan facilitate quality development, redevelopment, promote neighborhood sustainability, facilitate enhancement of human and natural environment in the city. We do strongly believe in this statement, and we feel that we represent this statement in everything that we do. The department is made up of three divisions, Planning and Landscaping, Building Services, and Code Compliance. Essentially what the departments do, our primary functions are development review, the DRC process, permitting, code compliance, land development code, comprehensive plan amendments, and county and state currency, and we are the liaisons to several boards in the city. So some of the events that have occurred this year, some of the successes and improvements we've had, is we did hold a charrette for the DDR zoning. This is, to us, a very successful event that was held here in this building for the Deng Group and other various stakeholders of the Dixie Highway Corridor. We also created the Phase One Pioneer Grove Infrastructure Master Plan. This is a plan that is designed to create the underground necessary changes in order to create the dense urban environment that we're looking for in Pioneer Grove. We have utilized new software and new technologies such as City Engine and SketchUp to create many of the new renderings and plans that you've seen. And if you recall from the State of the City event, in the video, the design that was made at the end of the video for what Pioneer Grove could look like was made in-house through new software. And we're very proud to announce that the Florida Planning and Zoning Association has given the City of Deerfield Beach an award for Design Standards for Pioneer Grove for 2018's Most Outstanding Development in Design. So we're getting some statewide recognition for the city, and as you know, we have a few projects already here in Pioneer Grove, and we have more coming, so things are, things are progressing. We've also implemented a cost recovery program for development review. This includes attorney's fees, traffic fees, noise, things like that where development comes forward, and instead of the city spending those dollars to do that type of work that we don't have the ability to do, we require that the developer pay for these consultants to review the plans. And so that's a process that has saved city dollars, city taxpayer dollars, and we're happy to be able to implement that. We've had major development here in the city this past year, thirteen projects this year. Of course, some of the bigger projects you're familiar with, Crystal Lake, JM Family, Deerfield Station, things like that, both had major land use plan amendment changes, and nine code amendments this past year. We have another one coming in September for development review committee changes. That's a very large change for us, so that'll squeak in this fiscal year, but it's not before you yet. Just to kind of show you location-wise where some of these plans have been, they're pretty much all over the city. The yellow is, the yellow is lightland, I'm sorry, DRC plans, and the blue is land use plan amendments. So these are very large projects in the city that take time. These are things that go before you, City Commission for approval. Not all of them have come before you yet, but these, some of these are still in the hot room. And some of the other things that have occurred is that the planning staff is working with the Department of Environmental Services and Economic Opportunity to really re-engage the NPO, county, and other state agencies in doing the work that is needed to improve the infrastructure of the city. So before you is locations, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the big yellow line, which is Tenth Street, but there are other locations here in the city that we are trying to improve, which includes not as well as just the Pioneer Grove, which is the green, Dixie Highway, Third Street or FAU Research Park, Green Road, Crystal Lake, and the Powerline Hillsborough intersection are all major improvements the city is looking to make, and we're looking to engage these other agencies to take advantage of their dollars to make these improvements So some improvements and accomplishments that have occurred this year in our Building Services Department, of course, is the change to the building fee schedule, which if you recall, we have simplified the building schedule process, especially for larger development, and making it consistent, making it easier for not just developers, but homeowners to understand the permitting process and make it as transparent as possible. We've also implemented a multitude of policy changes, app and surveys, customer greeters, sign-in tracking systems, pre-construction meetings, so forth, to help, again, not just the developers, but the homeowners as well in their permitting process. And then additionally, with our Code Compliance Services, some improvements we made this year, as you just recall, at the last commission meeting, we had the second reading for changes to the city code, including the standard housing code. We've also done a multitude of policy changes, including changes to our courtesy notice, the door hanger program, you know, additional outreach along with our PIO. We're working on language services for our residents who don't speak English, or English isn't their first language. And of course, we work with other departments, not just Planning and Development Services. We have a multitude of outreach, and that includes Crime Stoppers, but local organizations, churches, and so forth to get the message out. And I just wanted to take a moment to talk about some of the workload that the Code Compliance has, and just to share it for a moment. So this is just a look from April of last year, April of this year. We've done almost five thousand code cases in that year span. We had almost, a little more than three thousand were actually complied with, which is great. I'm sorry, more than three, four hundred were complied with. The department receives on average seventy-eight phone calls a day over its two main lines, and that doesn't include the inspectors' actual personal cell phones, which they give out to pretty much everyone they meet. So we receive a multitude of phone calls a day. We average about two hundred web complaints a month, and we had over two thousand snipe signs collected. We had fourteen mosquito violations. That number's actually growing because it's summertime, and this is taken back in April. So the Code Compliance Department is a very active department, working very hard for the city. Some of our performance measurements, we talked about major site plans already. We've added some new performance measures that we thought were important to sort of give a complete picture to the entire department, not just planning. So those include the number of building permits, a review within the timeframe, the number of emails replied to, because we have a multitude of email sites, which include not just web plan and web building and web code. And we're also including the number of code cases, we treat voluntary compliance, which is really the number that we're looking for, is the amount of code cases that are complied prior to going to magistrate. That's the, the real number that should be looked at, and we're really pushing for seventy-five percent. We feel that that is a reachable goal for us. Some additional performance measures are the number of permits. You know, we are in, of course, an economic boom, so our permits keep rising, which is great. We estimate to receive more than eight thousand permits this year for building. Our certificates of use have remained fairly steady, around five hundred a year, and of course, our courtesy notices and our violations, they continue to increase. That doesn't necessarily mean that people are doing anything wrong, it just means that, you know, we're doing our job in a more efficient manner. So let's talk about some major goals for our department for next year. To continue the comprehensive code review, so the city, again, I'm sorry, staff last year did nine code reviews, two brought forward to you, it'll be ten. We're looking to also bring another ten to you next year to continue our comprehensive code overhaul. We are continuing to develop the central core, which doesn't, which includes Pioneer Grove, as well as Dixie Highway and the surrounding areas. The Complete Streets Master Plan, implementation plan, so as most of you are aware of Hillsborough Boulevard improvements, the improvements that have happened along Ocean Drive, those are parts of the first phase of those plans. We're looking to move beyond that and create some additional projects. And we are in the process, we actually started the process of the rezoning of all the county zoning districts into city zoning. For the upcoming year, what the Planning and Development Services Department is looking forward to do is a Dixie Highway walking audit, which is an opportunity for local residents, business owners, really anyone, to walk with engineers from Broward County and give input into where they feel sidewalks, ADA, bus stops, any other types of improvements need to be made. We're hoping to do that this fall. Of course, the Phase Two for the infrastructure plan, which helped us with the actual implementation of the project, the Complete Streets Master Plan. We have a lot of upcoming site plans that most of you are probably familiar with. These are ones that haven't necessarily been submitted yet, which is the Penel Marina, Sandpiper Point, the RNDC and List Industries expansions, and some upcoming major land use plan amendments as well. So for building and code compliance, some of the updates that are happening for this year, we have the upcoming Town Hall Meet and Greet, which is in this building on Saturday, June thirtieth, for anyone who would like to attend. We have, and that was, I'm sorry, that was as Vice Mayor Battle's suggestion. And similarly, as Commissioner Parness has suggested, we have an upcoming building contractor training meeting we'd like to hold this fall. We have a new software we'd like to introduce for permit tracking, and improvements to customer service areas to building and code compliance that will be made with the changes to City Hall. And upcoming development permit review, Crystal Lake is just around the corner, that's over four hundred individual permits we'll be looking at, including the other site plans we see. So we actually are seeing, looking for a fairly large increase in permitting for this next year. Let's talk numbers. So for the most part, our numbers are consistent. We do have a small rise in planning due to personnel. The rise in building goes to additional scanning, need to scan documents, and then the rise in code compliance comes to additional requests for nuisance abatement. Overall, we're at a six percent increase for the three departments. And future considerations for the department, so additional funding for the Pioneer Grove, Dixie Highway infrastructure, and marketing. As, you know, Chris mentioned, you know, marketing is a very important aspect for these projects, and it's important that we get the word out and advertise as much as we can about the ability for development here in the City of Deerfield Beach. We are looking to add to the Code Compliance Department. We do not have administrative assistance, so as I mentioned, you know, the almost eighty phone calls we receive a day, you know, we don't actually have anyone who can, who can pick up that phone. Most of our inspectors are out in the field throughout the day. Also, the additional new code compliance inspectors, possibility of having a transportation planner with all the transportation improvements that we're making throughout the year. E-plan review is something that the city is, I think, should be very interested in, which essentially is electronic permitting, the ability for a developer or a homeowner to electronically submit plans instead of having to print the plans and submit the plans. It allows for a faster review, allows for more accurate review, and that is something that I think would greatly benefit this city. It's the future for permitting. A lot of other cities have gone towards this, and I think we should as well. The city is actively working on code for historic preservation. The city is actively working on code for historic preservation and changes to certificate of use, county zoning, as we've recently discussed, and the storage of outdoor materials for heavy construction and industrial uses. So just as a wrap up, you know, what, what the department is focused on is, you know, the vision for Dixie Highway, a Pioneer Grove and of course, the redevelopment of the city and the redevelopment of the central core. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I have one.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes, I, I had a mechanical inspector in my home today, inspecting air conditioning. I think it would be wise and make it easier for the public as well as the inspectors if they wore some type of identification badge. So that people aren't afraid to open the door. Guy knocks on my door. I, I knew he was coming, but not everybody calls to what time is he coming or what. And I was able to open the door without a problem, but I'm thinking of a great many seniors that we have. Specter comes and knocks on the door, at least he should have some sort of ID.
He should have a badge.
A badge.
Did he provide a badge? He should be providing you a badge.
Yeah, and it should be worn when they go knocking on the door to inspect.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Powell, the walking tour, and, and I heard you say it's going to be in, on, was it Dixie or?
Yeah, I'm Dixie.
Okay. Can we really get some press about that?
We are, we will. We're actually looking to set a date sometime in the fall.
Okay.
Obviously not in the hottest part of the year, we don't want to do it. We want to do it when it's a little cooler out. And we're working right now with the county on the best of opportunities and they actually have budgetary dollars to advertise.
So good.
So, yeah, so the county is, is going to be doing that for us, which is great.
Sounds good. Next thing, the historic preservation. You have a copy of their ordinance, their seeking comment, their redoing their historic preservation.
Yeah, we are an active commenter to the county. So one of our planners, Mary Ellen Scott, actually has a background in historic preservation and she has been our liaison to the county. She's been one of the, really, one of the active members of the board, of the organization. She's not part of the board, she's, you know, part of the community. And we're working on trying to essentially be on our own. The county is essentially giving us two choices. You can follow the county and the county guidelines, or you can have your own. And we would like to have our own. So that's what we're working towards.
Sounds good. And I had a question that come from a citizen who wanted to know, are we going to have a sign which says historic district or something like that?
So when you have a historic designation, you are able to get a sign from the state. So we work on historic designation. I mean, we're working on one right now from Brad Hildon, which is in Memorial Park. And so any other areas that we would deem to be historic and would preserve such would be worthy of a sign.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Drosky?
Can we go back to the numbers slide, please? Code compliance, is, does the number include, we just added an officer for the illegal dumping?
That is not in our budget. Sorry. That's in the budget for stainless management.
Sustainable management.
So we, we didn't actually lose or gain an officer, but we, we donated one of our own and brought in a new one. That's what we did. So we brought it, we gave them someone who knows the city already and knows what they're doing, so they wouldn't have to start off fresh.
So what was the, the increase, the 5% increase?
Right, for nuisance abatement. Nuisance abatement is a myriad of things, unkept lawns, dirty pools, boarding structures, unsafe properties, unsafe trees, cars and vehicles need to be towed. So it's just a myriad of things.
So that's like a labor or a materials cost that we're talking about?
Yeah, essentially what, what happens in nuisance abatement is, is it gives us the opportunity to immediately correct a violation that can't be corrected by the homeowner or the property owner. And then what we do is essentially we, through the lien process, you know, those, those dollars go back from the property owner.
And how much do we recoup? Do you have those, those numbers?
I don't have the numbers with me right now. About a third.
And the other two thirds just sits on the, on the tax roll?
They get, it depends on the lien process. Depends on which, which properties do come into compliance and then do abate their liens.
And the 12% for planning services, what was that increase again?
So essentially, most of it is for personnel, about $200,000 increase, about $146,000 comes from personnel services. The remaining $54,000 is some increases in software, office equipment and personnel training.
So back, back to personnel. Is that new personnel or merit existing personnel?
Existing personnel. We're not thinking on anyone to do this here.
So there's no net, it's a net zero for your department for employees?
As far as the operating, yes. Yes, we, we haven't necessarily increased that portion of our budget.
Is there, as far as operating, you caveated, I guess, your, your statement, is there an increase somewhere else or?
Well, there are reductions in some places and increases in others. We did reductions to our contractual services. We made reductions into some of our, other things we're allowed to, some of our marketing efforts. But at the end of the day, our increases were based on just department needs that, you know, since this is our software and office equipment that we need to have for this year.
I mean, this isn't really for you, it's for the, I guess, the managers. You know, going forward, instead of us grilling the department heads on what the increases and decreases are, if they can have that part of their presentation, that may, that may help us to consolidate our, our questioning.
No problem.
That's all.
Mr. Power, looking at your goals from last year, I know, and we, one of the big ones was obviously the comprehensive code review and we, that was a lofty goal to try to do in one year. We knew that probably was going to happen and I noticed you put the continue to strive for that goal, which I know you have. So that makes sense to me. Obviously, we completed the Pioneer Grove land use plan and zoning amendment, so we were able to do that. But I noticed that DRC process to streamline supplemental review times?
Yeah, that's what's going to be coming to you in September.
Okay, but that is completed at this point, it just needs to go through commission approval?
Essentially.
Essentially, okay. What about, and I noticed this was in your goals, it wasn't mentioned whether it was accomplished, and it's not in the current goals for this upcoming year, which is the RSO medical office zoning district near the hospital.
Yes, okay, so thank you. So actually, it is listed as what is the county zoning. What staff determined and with, with legal guidance is that we really can't create an overlay district on county zoning. That would not be possible. So the concept of doing an overlay district as we originally intended isn't feasible. What we need to do is rezone these properties of a county zoning district into a city zoning district. And what we'd like to do, instead of actually doing an overlay, is just rezone the properties that immediately surround the hospital into a comparable zoning district that would complement the hospital. And that's probably what we're doing with the county zoning.
So the, I mean, that to me is not, that's not you failing to be able to accomplish that goal, it's a matter of realizing that that goal is not something that could be accomplished in the way we were approaching it. And we just need to change that up. So that's what you had presented as your new goals?
Yes, county zoning, yes.
Okay, looking for some clarification? No, I, I have it right here, so I see what you're talking about.
There's no.
It's a lot, it's, it's your number four on your list. It's the rezone all county zoning.
That's, that's what I mentioned.
Okay, a little clarity on that would have helped this.
Sorry.
No, but I understand it's relatively easy to follow. How much of the 12% for planning services is going towards personnel? How much is it towards other items?
The net is about 146,000.
How much of the 12% goes towards, you, you've got an increase, so how much is it going towards personnel?
Can I use my calculator?
Put the dollar numbers down.
Sounds like about 60, 65%.
About 146,000 of the.
All of it then, so the entire increase goes strictly to personnel?
No.
We didn't really increase our operating budget this year. I mean, to the minimal amount, so we weren't really proposing that this year.
Yeah, let me help you.
Can you help with that, please?
Can you go back to that screen? Yes.
Can I answer your question on the, so, one of the things that we started doing about, was it two fiscal years ago, Hugh?
Roughly.
Yeah. What we do is, never before in operating departments did we include health insurance. So what happens is, now what you're seeing is the COLA, the merit and health insurance. So that's also included, it's just not the 2% merit average and the 2.5% COLA. It's also health insurance. If you guys want it broken down like that, we'll be more than happy to try to include that. And I doubt that we can get them for tonight's presentations that quickly, but we'll work on that for tomorrow night's presentations. That's where part of it is. The other part of his increase for planning and development services also deals with purchasing some more licensing rights to do ESRI, which it, which Mr. McKenzie spoke about last night, which is for GIS, because planning and development services uses GIS to share information, to build the layers and the maps, things of that nature. And do you want to take it from there?
Yeah, that's exactly right. The software increases and the minor equipment increases essentially result to these, these technology changes. Our computers require, you know, upgrades in order to be able to use the software that we have for, for GIS, which our department utilizes GIS, every, every person in our department uses, utilizes GIS, not just for building, creating maps, but for, you know, cataloging and using data. That also includes things like, you know, the software program that you ended up sketching up, Adobe Photoshop and suite that we're using now to help do our own marketing and promotion.
Okay, so, and I guess that's kind of what my question was partially about, I probably worded it improperly, so my apologies. How much of the increase that we see here is software, minor equipment changes?
Sure. So essentially, for our software increases, it's about $2,000 more than we, we've asked for in the past. Our minor equipment has gone up a little more than 5,000. And our, our training has gone up a little more than 5,000 as well.
Okay, so, but you're asking for an increase in that department of about $200,000?
So 100, about 146,000 of that is, as Burges was just stating, related to the personnel services, about 54,000 is a cost change.
So that's where, that's where the health insurance and all that was included in the past is in, is in here now.
Right.
We decided to do this, this way now. Okay. So it's a little difficult when you look at it, so it's hard to do apples.
Yeah, I've got the.
Apples.
Sorry.
So that, that is a curve that I think probably should have been explained earlier. But we're also estimating for things to go down. I mean, how come we're looking at building permits to go down? How come we're looking at landscape permits to go down and, and we're also looking at our courtesy notices to go down?
I think that we've sort of peaked in a couple of those factors and we're going to steady out them. That's what we kind of feel is the case. As far as some of the permitting issues, the city used to have Lighthouse Point piggyback off of us for contractual services. We've since ended that contract. That kind of solves a little bit of that. But for some of the other reasons, like we look at, you know, development changes on an annual basis for what will probably come before the planning department, and then there's a bit of a lag between the plant, you know, the building department. For example, I mean, the Crystal Lake golf course redevelopment change occurred back in October of last year, and we don't really expect permitting to happen until probably early in winter of next year, you know? And that's going to be a three-year plan. So we kind of look at this as a, as it goes out and try to determine how many permits we're going to be seeing.
Okay. The other question is, we have the abandoned property ordinance and I think it's a great service to piggyback on what Commissioner Drosky was talking about with our nuisance abatement. That's so the residents don't suffer. Our code compliant, our, our code policy, it take, it's, it's a, it's not a fast turnaround on that. And it's not because they're not doing a good job, it's because that's just the nature of the beast. You have to give warning, you have to give them the opportunity to come into compliance, you have to go through a special magistrate. It takes time. But in that meantime, while they're not doing anything or things aren't moving, people are suffering because you've got two-foot grass, all these issues. So we go on the property and we actually take care of that.
That's exactly right.
The abandoned property ordinance that we have in place, which allows us to go ahead and do nuisance abatement and come in and do that, allows us to recoup that money, but that's only for an abandon, it's something that qualifies under the abandoned property. You might have people living in these homes that simply are not bringing them up the code and we're trying to get them at least so they're not a, a complete anchor around the neck of the neighborhood.
That's true.
So that's why we're only recouping a small portion of that.
It is, it takes time. I mean, the reality is, we're spending a dollar immediately because there's some type of emergency, whereas some of these cases can linger for a couple of years. And so it does, it takes time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have another question.
Vice, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Parnas?
Thank you.
Mr. Powell, and, and I guess, and I don't want to belabor this issue, but I heard the mayor talk about abandoned property and my colleague talked about something else. Unsafe structures, how are we planning to address that going forward?
Right, thank you. The unsafe structures board will come back. We are, we are working towards that. It is a laborious and long process to get underneath the county's regulation. The first step was the standard housing code that you approved at the last commission meeting.
Correct.
And by moving that forward and actually with the increase in the abatement process, the actual dollar increases that we're requesting this year is really for that purpose. So it is something that we're working towards. I did not consider it to be a goal for next year because frankly, I don't know if it's going to happen by the end of next year, but it is something we are working towards.
Thank you.
Perfect. Commissioner Parnas?
Yes. Is it my understanding we're trying to get away from the magistrate system?
Not necessarily. What we're trying to do is create a process in which if, the magistrate's responsibility to, to, to the property owner is to determine if, if more time is needed and if it's in, and whether or not a fine needs to be levied. And that really is when the, the issue can be resolved. There are many times where issue cannot be resolved. Illegal dumping is a great example. You know, you've done it, it's over. You can't fix it, you know? So we are, we've created this new civil citation process, which allows us to immediately fine the violator. They don't necessarily have to go in front of the magistrate now because they've been fined. They have to pay their fine. And if they don't do those things, then their action now belongs in Circuit Court. So it, it's a, it's a separate process that gives us really an additional tool, but it's not intended to necessarily curb the amount of violations that we do. It's really an additional tool for code compliance to stop these offenders who have done something that really isn't correctable.
So we will have the magistrate and we will have another system?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Vicki Plastik-Burkhard, I'm the Community Development Director, and to my left is Alexa Ogbon, the city's grant writer. This evening, I'm going to present to you community development. Our areas of responsibility includes planning, administration, implementation and management of the federal and state entitlement grants. That's something we've been known for over the last few years. In addition to that, we've been working aggressively with all our departments on grant writing and grant management, and I'll show you some numbers later on in my presentation. We're also the city's liaison to state, federal and local agencies, including Broward County Public Schools. Over the last year, we've really ramped up our communication with them. Also, the city's liaison with the Deerfield Beach Housing Authority. Last year, actually this year, we started our education initiative, I'll go into more details on that, and then working with planning and economic development on affordable housing and workforce development. Our achievements for 2018, as you know, we received 400,000 from the state legislature for the development of the Brad Hildon Knolls Memorial Park. So far, we've received 2.6 million in grant funds. We've completed 23 rehab projects. That's an increase in our goal. Our goal was 20 and we completed 23. We provided five households with purchase assistance and we're anticipating actually having three closes this week, so that's actually going to be eight. One of the things we've recently completed is the translation of our home repair application and our purchase assistance application to three languages, Spanish, Creole and Portuguese. Our additional achievements, we reestablished the education advisory board. They had their first meeting in February and we've met every month since then and will continue to meet. will continue to meet. We facilitated, we have facilitated the quarterly meetings with the local school principals. We're now continuing to build our relationships with the schools. We completed the first year of our mentoring programs, where our city staff actually goes into two of our schools, Parkridge Elementary and Deerfield Beach Elementary, for the reading piles program and also two to meet. As you know, grade level, third grade level reading is a goal of Broward County. Broward County right now is at 57% of our students, of our third grade students read at third grade level. And most of our elementary schools in Deerfield were either at the average or below the average. So that's one of the areas when we meet with the school principals is focusing on grade level reading. We also coordinated the first welcome, the first day of school, we had a welcome back to school event for our elementary schools. I know many of you participated at that, with that, and the principals felt like, felt that it was a great way to start the school, and they're hoping that we'll be able to do that again this year for them. We also, as a part of our community outreach, we've partnered with the Center for Active Agent. In February, we did We Love DFB Seniors events. We did an event at Praxis and also at the Center for Active Agent for our seniors. We don't want to leave our seniors out. So our performance measurements. As you can see, we do have new performance measurements. The number of rehab, I mentioned, we had completed 23. Our goal was 20, so we've exceeded our goal for that. We list our CDPG fund-in received. We don't have control over that, but it's good to see what the numbers are. As you can see, they have increased slightly over the few years. The number of programs that we administer, we administered four, we are administering four programs. We increased, our goal of purchase assistance was five, and we anticipate being eight because their closings happening. Total of grant applications, this year we've done 15. Alexa came on board July 1st, and we've been meeting with all our departments and aggressively applying for more grants than we've ever had in the past. So we've done 15. I think last week she submitted five. I was supposed to say that. And then number of awards, because we recently submitted them, so far we have three awards. We don't know if we're going to receive it, so we didn't want to put a number. We do anticipate getting as much as we can, but I didn't want to give you a number. We don't know if we're going to get the... They're all competitive grants, so we don't know if we're going to get the fund in there. And that's the dollar amount we've received so far. Something we started to track is the number of appropriations requests. This year, we submitted four appropriations requests. We did receive one, which was the Bran Hilden Knolls project. Due to the events that happened this year, a lot of funding was geared elsewhere, but we do hope to continue our efforts in seeking funding as part of the state on an annual basis for some of our smaller projects. We've also been working with our lobbyists on any issues that come up to make sure that the city of Deerfield Beach is seen and that anything that can impact us positively, we do reach out to them on infrastructure issues or different issues that are out there. Mentioned the mentoring program, our partnership with the schools, and the outreach that we're enjoying in the community. Our budget. So currently, our budget shows is a 48.5% increase. That includes salary. One of the things we added last year's budget was the Community Development Supervisor. This is offset by our CDPG funds, Community Development Block Grant. In the past, Deerfield Beach Housing Authority was our administrator for the program. However, we've changed our contract, so they focus primarily on the project base. As you can see, our numbers have increased in terms of the projects that we can complete, and the city will do the administration. There are plans that we have to submit to our funding agencies, reporting on a quarterly and monthly basis, attending the meetings. So we're taking on that responsibility where Deerfield Beach Housing Authority can focus on the program component of it. So that's why there's an increase there, as well as there's planning and design for improvements along Dixie Highway. That's a project we're going to do next year. Tribe Give Back is also a project we're going to do, which has the increase in the funding. And also with Alexa on board, a grant management system. The grant management system was very decentralized. We did not know all of the funding that the city... There was not one location where we can pinpoint all of the grant funds that we have to make sure that we're in compliance, we're submitting, reporting, we are doing close-up reports, and knowing who that contact person is. So we're proposing to have a grant management system onboard that not only we can do that, but also we can get output notice on when grant funding is available. A lot of times when we get the notice, it's a week or two, and sometimes we have to come to the commissioner where this funding, it actually, this program actually will filter all grants that are available and will have notice versus having to search for the grants. It provides, we tell what our needs are, and we would provide a list of various grants that are out there. And this is some of the things I mentioned previously, but we wanted, for future consideration and goals, implement a high school internship program. We established a teen youth council. I mentioned the grant management system, DFB Tribe Give Back. Spoke about the planning and design for improvements along Dixie Highway. Identify city-owned residential vacant lots to partner with DVHA to develop the lots. Also work with organizations, community organizations to promote various programs and resources available. Will continue to translate additional documents in multiple languages, and also a government One of the things we need to look at is the threat of reduction or elimination of CDPG home and ship. These are all entitlement grant funds that we receive for our home repair and purchase assistance program, as well as projects we do in the community in the low and moderate income areas. Increase the city's visibility with the state and federal agencies and delegates. We've been working with planning, planning development services, economic development, and environmental services regarding funding that will be needed for various infrastructure projects, 10th Street, and we've really increased our, to increase our visibility as the city. Monitor legislative items at both the federal and the state level, and we've increased that as well, and work with government relations consultants to influence and make a positive impact on the city. So that's some of these areas. We've started to do that this year and will continue next year to make sure that we're at the table when there are discussions and the funding's available, that we can utilize those fund-ins. And this is just some of the programs that we completed, the projects we completed this year. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each year, we fund a number of nonprofits. We're going to be getting, or if we approve this budget, we're going to be getting the grants, what you call the management system. I would like to see us put into play a program, not really a program, when you are noticed or you find grants that will apply to nonprofits, that you actually send them notice with a copy of that, you know, the requirements. And maybe that could help us, as the city manager, in terms of... And you would come back if they get those grant fund-ins. Of course, we were going to say, hey, you know, we did this and this, whatever. But I would like to see that happen because we have a void there in terms of working with our nonprofits, and I believe that's one of the reasons why they all come to us for funding, because they're hurting for funds just like we are. But if we know of applications wherein grant requirements or whatever, that they can apply for funds, it would help a great deal. I am not so sure that we are doing all that we can do to help, and it's all dictated because by what we put in our plan. I know that much, one way or the other. I've had a flurry of requests in the latter, in the last month, basically. It's the beginning of hurricane season. Where can I get money to assist me with putting up hurricane shelters? I mean, shutters. Okay? So, and we don't really do that, but if there, if we could gather that type of information and you can have it available for citizens when they call, that would help those citizens a great deal. We're talking about community development then, and how we develop those communities that are just, you know, the marginal communities or whatever. There is a need for hurricane shutters in certain parts of this city, basically. And I would say all over the city, one way or the other. And people need to understand where they can go get help in terms of getting hurricane shutters, one way or the other. I am not so sure that we do the best job in terms of advertising when we are taking comment, one way or the other. And I'm putting me on the line until I'm re-elected here. Me on the line, I've asked with PIO, we're going to be sitting together so that we can come up with a strategy, Mr. City Manager, so that, and it might cost a little bit more money in the PIO budget. But I'd like to see us do a better job of having... I mean, this is appalling. How many people do we have? These are major budget hearings, and how many people do we have here? Even if we have to get a bus and send them out to Century Village to pick us up some people, we need to have input from those people or from the citizenry on everything that we do, basically. So if we could look into doing that, and of course, Rebecca, we'll be working together to, I guess, extract some money from the city manager. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Drofsky?
This includes the nonprofits, pardon me, the money the city gives?
No.
No?
No. It says the nonprofits are in a non-departmental account. It's not under the Community Development.
Where, where does that fall, Mr. Manager?
The nonprofits such as Junior Achievement Organization and Gateway Out, or what?
Correct.
Community Outreach, they fall under the General Fund Community Participation Budget or Line Item Department. It's technically not a department, but it's set up as such. So that's where those monies are.
Okay. Maybe we can reserve some time tomorrow to briefly discuss that?
Some of those, such as, what's the one, Family Central and a couple of the others, actually have been moved to the Active Aging Department just to make it, because that's where they directly go anyway. But some of these others, we were going to place them under Community Development, but we decided that this year, this upcoming fiscal year would not be the year to do it. We'd rather wait, but we can certainly talk about those. Right now, we've held the line, so whatever they're getting this current fiscal year, that's all we've put in, whether, with the exception of the Area Agency on Aging and a couple of the other ones, where we know we get $3 back for every dollar we give, and there's a formula that they request. Otherwise, we've held the line. And if you want to eliminate those, those are certainly something that we can discuss. That's policy direction from the commission. It makes no difference to us.
I don't want to mix apples and oranges. I'll bring it up later.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Just real quick, the total, you have it for your performance measurements. Total number of purchases, is that the first-time home buyer program?
Yes.
So we did a lot less than what we were shooting for. What happened with that? Do we know?
So it's based on the funding that we received, as you know, even though for the CDPG funding slightly went up, for ship each year, we've received a reduction. In 2017, we received $400,000. Last year, the current year, we're at $300,000, and it's projected July 1st that we're going to get $100,000. So those affect our numbers.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. It looks like all your major goals that you set out to do from last year's budget, you touched on them and achieved them for the most part. You might want to, you might want to get a little more specific on some of those because they're a little broad, so, but I think your metrics that you have seem to work out pretty well. The, how many personnel do you have, are you expecting to have for this upcoming budget?
Four.
Four, so it's the same. So I'm trying to understand and give the increase that we're looking at here. Can you explain that to me one more time?
Sure. For the current budget year, the Community Development Supervisor was not fully funded in this budget year, whereas it will be moving for, in 2019.
Okay. You want to say something?
Yeah. Yeah, just quickly. So we only funded it for 50% because we wanted to work with Dr. Jarman, who oversees Deerfield Beach Housing Authority and also the Family Empowerment that actually runs the CDPG, make sure everything was okay. So we only funded it at 50% for this current fiscal year, '18. Next year, it's fully funded. And these, again, include insurance, COLA, Merit, things of that nature for personal services. You want to talk a little bit about the increases with the DBR and things of that?
Yes. We do have funded set aside $20,000 for the design and... I can't get my slide. Planning and design for improvements along Dixie, also for the Deerfield Beach Tribe Give Back, the management system that I mentioned. So the total increases $169,000. Of that, $150 is in salaries and also with the insurance. So the balance from that is the operating component, which is about $50,000 of that is the project base, which I mentioned, the implementation of the grant management system, the Tribe Give Back, planning and design for improvements along Dixie, and then also our translation, translating our documents. It does cost quite a bit. So about $50,000 is with the operating for the projects.
Okay. The administering of the grant programs, the numbers that you gave to us of the total of grants that were awarded, is that all across the city, for every department, everything?
And these are for only new grants that we receive.
Okay.
Just new grants. We have existing grants that are over a time period that have not been fully expended, but these are just new grants that we've been awarded in 2018. We're still waiting for additional because a lot of the grants, you have to wait six to nine months to hear a response, but these are just for the few that we've received thus far.
Excellent. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I, there's something the manager said that I don't quite comprehend. When we said in 2018, we only funded about 50%, and now '19, they're going to be funded 100%. So where did the other portion of their money come from? Yeah?
Well, basically what happens is for the first six months of the fiscal year, we don't hire that person. We don't fill that position. So it's for the lap, or the second half of the fiscal year that we fund that position, advertise and fill it. And then once they're hired, the candidate is selected and we hire them, then they're in, and then they're at 100% for the following fiscal year.
Okay. Then there was something else. And Alexis, I think you're doing great as getting us more grants, but I don't know if I understand, if we're awarded a grant, does that help reduce our budget, or is that just go on a new project or something? How does that work when we get money from the state or something?
It all depends on the grant. I'm sorry, I'm answering for Alexa.
No, but, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out...
Yeah, so it all depends. In some cases, like for instance, if we receive the SAFER grant, which helps us with firefighters, or the COPS grant, which helps us with deputies, then usually you're adding to the budget, but...
But it's covered by the grant.
In those cases, federal government's covering it for, partially for like 75% the first year, and then it goes down until after year three. But a lot of these grants that they're going after are actually for capital projects or just enhanced...
If they get it, it goes designated to something that's not in right now.
Yeah, there are very few grants that actually pay... Yeah, there are very few grants that actually pay for continuing operations.
Okay, except the ones you described.
Anything, Alexis?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Ms. Shroggus?
Just a quick follow-up question then. So of the 15 grant applications submitted, how many are still pending? Because that would make your three that are awarded seem deceptively low. If you have 12 that are pending and three were granted, then you're at 100%. So.
Of that, 10 are pending, we received notice on about five, two we didn't receive.
So you're three out, you're three out of five?
Yes. Continue.
That puts it into more perspective. Thank you.
Anything else?
Just, just very quickly, you know, it's, what you all are doing, and, and, and I have to applaud my city manager for going up to Washington this year. If we don't keep those contacts, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, if we don't build up Deerfield Beach with our legislators and all of those other folks that we have to come into contact with, we're doing Deerfield Beach a disservice. All right. And, and, you know, and I, and I know people out there are going to say, oh, why they're going to Washington, whatever, but there's a reason why you do these types of things. And in order for us to get out there, if we would not have even known about, unless it could attest to this, about the opportunity zones stuff, had we not gone to Washington on that trip, one way or the other. So it is imperative, Mr. Mayor, that we keep out there, we, we're in the forefront, meeting and greeting the people, and, and I say that to say this Broward Days is coming up, Mr. City Manager, and we need to have a presence. I cannot stress that enough, that we need to have a presence at the table so that we can know when the monies are out there and we can go after those dollars. Thank you.
If I could, just quickly, yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone, including the public in particular, know that both Vicki and Alexa have done a great job because, yeah, it's important with the legislators absolutely agree because they really help push things through, but it's their relationship building that's happening with those agency heads and the division chiefs, whether it's in Tallahassee or up in DC, that make a big difference. In fact, Alexis, since I stole your answer earlier, why don't you just give a brief update on what's going on with the EDA grant? Because this could be a big deal for the city. Something we definitely want to work toward. Thank you.
So in March, we took a trip to DC and we met with several federal departments, one of them being Economic Development, so the EDA. And out of that came a contact for the representative of Florida, his name's Greg Bode. So we met with him and we did a site visit here, and we've been meeting with him back and forth, going over several big infrastructure projects related to disaster recovery, resilience. And so far, that's looking good. And that grant, it ranges, but it can be anywhere from one million to six million with infrastructure, street improvements, underground utilities. So it would definitely bolster our city. So, yeah, we're very excited about that. So I'm.
Nice. And one thing to point out, you go on trips like that, we attended a meeting in which we're competing for the same, you're essentially trying to sell your city and why they should, we should get these representatives to advocate for us when they have other people to advocate for. And we walked into a meeting, our staff was in there, and we had another city who's vying for the same thing we were. And we thought they were on a tour guide. Like, they had no idea that they actually were professionals that were there from, as elected officials from a city. And we had our staff there, and, and the comparison between our presentation, why they would book both of us at the same time, I have no idea, but the presentation done by our staff compared to just their presence and what they attempted to present, there was no comparison. And that certainly more is going to bear some more fruit. So thank you very much, you guys did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, Deerfield Beach Tribe and our Deerfield Beach residents. My name's Dawn DeFranz, I represent the Department of Active Aging, and it's my honor tonight to introduce you to Sherri Wilson, Assistant Director of the Department of Active Aging, and one of our newest team members, Maria Carmen Ortiz Figaro, who is our Grants Coordinator specifically for the Department of Active Aging. As you know, last year, we embarked on a brand-new name for our Department, Department of Active Aging, Where Life Happens. We've kind of used the life acronym to show what we do at the Department of Active Aging, which is we have multitude of learning opportunities for individuals. Our goal is to encourage individuals to remain independent and active for as long as possible as relates to fall prevention and health and wellness. In addition, we see day in, day out, the number of friendships that are being developed at the Center for Active Aging with individuals of all ages. And you'll see a new energy due to the name change to the Center for Active Aging, where we actually have seen a decline in the average number of population. Typically with the Center for Active Aging, it's been about 78. We're seeing actually a decline a little bit to 76. Still in our daycare programs, the average age is approximately 81, and we are continuously serving, about 75% of the population is over the age of 75. Some of the services and programs that we provide at the Center for Active Aging include informational referral services, education and training services, health support and wellness services, counseling services, recreation services, outreach and transportation services. And I'll describe those a little bit later. At the Center for Active Aging, we used to say we had benefits or values. We really have some different types of amenities for individuals primarily over the age of 60. We have a concrete male site where we serve between the seniors, the Alcindas daycare and multicultural daycare, and the preschool, nearly 20,000 males a year. And for some of the seniors, that may be the only male that they receive. It means a third of the recommended daily allowance, so we serve as a concrete male site. We also have the Emergency Home Energy Assistance Program, which allows us to assist individuals who are 60 and over, income-eligible, by paying for the electric bill twice a year during the heating season and the cooling season, up to $600. In addition, we have a food pantry. We're very fortunate to have a multitude of community organizations that support us in our food pantry. We assisted 35 families this past year, and currently, we're giving out food boxes that were donated by two local Girl Scout groups for hurricane preparedness for this year. We have about, we had about 300 food boxes there. A medical loan closet, not very well-known. We have canes, walkers, and wheelchairs. This past year, we loaned out just three from our medical loan closet. Do you have a small physical fitness exercise room, which individuals enjoy each and every day? I'm sorry about that. Health and wellness room, that's where we have most of our Center for Active Aging programming, which ranges from yoga classes, whether it be on mass with stretching and flexibility, possibly is cheer fitness programs, as well as enhanced fitness programs, which is an evidence-based program through Stanford University. Have a computer lab, which we have eight computers for individuals to connect via wireless or, to the computers, or they also get training by volunteers, as well as students that we work with, on their laptops, their iPhones, their cameras, whatever they like to have at the computer lab. We're embarking on a special partnership starting in July with the South Florida Aging Institute on a computer program with some assistance from the IT department, along with the instructors that they'll provide for the seniors. We have a small library reading room, which we have large print books, as well as a reading machine for people who are experiencing vision problems such as macular degeneration to read any type of publication they would like. In addition, we have a coffee shop and a small boutique, which helps to serve the needs of the seniors, particularly those that depend on our transportation, as well as the concrete male site each and every day, they have accessibility to bagels, English muffins, as well as a small boutique. We have a multitude of intergenerational activities. Of course, we're the only center in Broward County that has an onsite preschool, but we also work at local elementary schools, as well as universities and colleges, and the Health Occupation Students of America program at Deerfield Beach High School. And we have many volunteer opportunities, as I said, we couldn't open up our doors without volunteers. The next slide shows another component of our Active Aging, primarily adult daycare programs that are licensed through the Agency for Healthcare Administration, which we have our Alcindas Daycare Center, which is the first dementia-specific daycare center in Broward County, provide case management, screening and assessment, caregiver training and support in facility respite for both the Alcindas daycare participants, who can be any age, that is diagnosed with any form of dementia, as well as memory loss. And then we have the Multicultural Daycare Center, which we serve individuals, so speak, Creo, Spanish, as well as English. We do serve Portuguese. Right now, we currently do not have anybody that speaks Portuguese. In addition, we have our onsite preschool, as I mentioned before. We serve children two to five years old. We have the school readiness program, the voluntary pre-K for children that are four and five years old, as well as intergenerational programs. We worked with the Read to Read program with the United Way of Broward County and Community Development, specifically. We had two volunteers that worked with the voluntary pre-K program for, for students that were four years old going into pre-kidney garden. And we also have Music Together program, and one of our preschool teachers is certified in the Music Together program. We found both those programs literacy, as well as learning through music and fun to be very powerful. This particular area of our campus, we are looking at, as it relates to monitoring, we significantly have had a low enrollment. We currently have 15 children, and we'll be looking and monitoring that on an ongoing basis. One of the newest areas that we developed this past year was the Transportation. Sorry? Speak up? Okay, sure, I can speak up, sorry. The Transportation Services Division, we broke that away in a sense from the Center for Active Aging, in which we're providing transportation, more so for all ages, and we have worked closely with the Parks and Recreation Department on this endeavor. We have the Agency Coordination Paratransit Services, which is a door-to-door services, transportation service for individuals 60 years old and over, and that's in partnership with Broward County through the TRIPS program. We also have the Local Service Program, which is a state-funded program, and that, again, is door-to-door service, and that program funds not only transportation, but also a multicultural daycare center. The Deerfield Beach Express 1 and 2, those are community bus shuttles, that's for all ages, and we go to primarily low-income government housing facilities within Broward County, and individuals allow accessibility to the grocery store, to medical appointments, field trips, as well as a step route. Some individuals even get to work, as well as to get to the beach with the Deerfield Beach Express 1 and 2. The college tours is something that we, in partnership with Parks and Rec, that is sponsored through the Urban League, and we provide transportation throughout the year, the school year, that is, for approximately 50 children throughout Broward County to Deerfield Beach High School, so they can get involved with the educational opportunities related to being college-bound and learning, as well as visiting some of the local universities and colleges within, within our community. We also have funding through the Community Development Block Grant, that is for individuals 62 and over who live in Deerfield Beach, and that, again, is a fixed route or a set route, in which we provide transportation for low-income government housing facilities to special locations as the beach on Fridays, Festival Flea Market, Aldi's, Walmart, and several other locations that really the community has told us that's where they would like to go to, that do not have transportation accessibility. In addition, we have the after-school program. We pick up children approximately at three local schools, and we bring them to the community centers here in Deerfield Beach after school, so that they can participate in homework assistance, as well as educational opportunities. We also have, right now, we're providing summer camp, field trips through our Transportation Department for all of Parks and Rec's excellent programs that they have developed and they've expanded this year in order to have a more fulfilling experience during the summer months for summer camps. We also provide transportation approximately four to five times a year for the bison football, as well as the cheerleaders for all of the away games here in Broward County. And then we participate in various different, we participate, as relates to transportation, excuse me, for the different numerous wonderful special events that are coordinated by Parks and Rec and the city of Deerfield Beach, such as the Arts Festival, the Sip and Stroll, the Fourth of July Holiday, Boots and Bourbon, Ocean Brews and Loos, and there's so many special events that the city's involved in, and our transportation team does an excellent job providing transportation. This is one of our buses, this is an older bus, but you'll see, we just recently changed the name on the, on the bus to the Center for Active Aging, Where Life Happens. We currently have 20 vehicles, 16 buses that are wheelchair accessible, actually 14 are wheelchair accessible, two are 25-passenger buses. We also have one station wagon and two Broward County community buses that provide the Deerfield Beach Express 1 and 2 community bus services. We're anticipating receiving three new buses. One is a 16-passenger bus with two wheelchair tie-downs, as well as a 12-passenger bus with two wheelchair tie-downs. And we just ordered a Toyota Corolla, which we'll be using to complement the station wagon specifically for people who do not want to get in a bus and that need to get to either dialysis or chemotherapy or radiation-type treatments and have a challenge in getting into a vehicle and do not want to be in a wheelchair. Interesting enough, just to note, we were supposed to get a Ford Fusion, but that was being built in Mexico, so we had to go for Toyota Corolla because it was by USA here in America, which I thought that was kind of comical, but we're very fortunate to receive funding through Florida Department of Transportation for those buses. Some agreements and contracts that we currently have with the Department of Active Aging, we have the Old Americans Act of 1965, which is the Title III funding specifically for supportive services for individuals over the age of 60, which I'll elaborate shortly as relates to counseling services, recreation services and health support services. We do not anticipate any changes in the future, and it's a little over $187,000. Title III B under the Old Americans Act of 1965 is also federal money, and that covers our caregiver training and support. There's no changes, and that's a little over $5,000. The Alzheimer's Disease Initiative funding is state funding, and that was funding that that covers our case management in facility respite, so that we can keep individuals at home in the communities with supportive services, as well as caregiver training and support. That, we received a little, we're going to receive $438,000. We got about a $6,000 increase. That was where we got the cut from the state of $195,150. That is non-recurring money. Edith Letterberg from the Aging and Disability Resource Center was able to find some money to continue to fund us as of July 1st and gave us $6,000. But we will continue to work with our local legislators, as well as state legislators, so that that money will be restored for this upcoming year. Local service project funding, as mentioned before, is for our adult daycare center, particularly our multicultural adult daycare center, door-to-door transportation service. There's no changes, they had a little over $132,000. And then our Emergency Home Energy Assistance Program is the federal money where we assist individuals that are in danger of having the electricity turned off, that are over 60, that are income-eligible, and that's about $50,000. They will be changing that particular grant, the only change will start as of October 1st to September 30th, and it was running from April 1st to March 31st. Some other grants that we've received, I mentioned before, the two new buses and one sedan that we'll be ordering, that's through a Florida Department of Transportation grant, that is a federal grant of 80%, 10% from the state. The other 10% is covered by the Northeast Focus Point Casa nonprofit Board of Directors, and that's a little bit over $208,000. We received through the Elder Services Resource Network, which is a private nonprofit grant, $750 for our protocol therapy program, which is, I seven hundred and fifty dollars for our protocol cultural therapy program, which is our garden club, as well as the children's intergenerational program. The Broward Alzheimer's Coordinating Council, we received a little over fourteen hundred for our music therapy program. As I mentioned before, we've seen that music therapy and literacy, of course, very important for the children, but it's quite amazing to see with the Alzheimer's and individuals that have memory loss, the impact of a positive music therapy program. And that's in our adult daycare center program. Our Community Development Block Grant, I mentioned before, twenty-five thousand is allocated for senior transportation, another five thousand for the Alzheimer's Center, and another five thousand for health and wellness programs for individuals sixty-two and over. And then the Community Foundation of Broward Grant, which is an Aging with Dignity grant, that particular grant is called fostering awareness. Their major emphasis, because in Broward County, the fastest-growing segment of our population is eighty-five plus, this grant was specifically for people eighty and over. We did a, and we're just finishing up this grant, Cheer Yoga class, caregiver support group later in the afternoons for caregivers to take in, as well as a music therapy program and multicultural-type activities and entertainment for the Alzheimer's Daycare Center. And then the Northeast Focal Point Concert Board, which is a private nonprofit, five oh one C three assists with daily operations and pledged a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the center's operation. The next three slides, we're going to talk about our performance measures, and specifically the performance measures I've mentioned before. The supportive services through the Old Americans Act of nineteen sixty-five covers our counseling, individuals and support groups. You see fiscal year seventeen, what was accomplished fiscal year eighteen estimates, and then fiscal year nineteen. Fiscal year eighteen estimates are listed based on what has been accomplished so far, which is about one hundred and forty-eight groups, one thousand four hundred and forty-four people in attendance. Our goal for eighteen actions, three hundred groups, which is represented in our upcoming goal, because as I showed you before, there's no change in the money, so we're not going to be increasing, you know, the number of people, because we only have one licensed mental health counselor. And we're anticipating about twelve hundred people in attendance for the upcoming year. Education and training, in two thousand seventeen, we accomplished two hundred and twenty-five outreach education and trainings, whether it be at the center or outside of the campus. And right now, which should be the first eight months of this year, it was a hundred and two, and our goal for this year is a hundred and seventy-five, as well as for two thousand and nineteen, fiscal year two thousand, fiscal year nineteen, excuse me. Health support, health and wellness and promotion, individuals and groups in seventeen was three hundred and seventeen, sixteen groups, seven thousand five hundred and thirty-seven people in attendance, a little bit lower in this area. We have a hundred and fifty-seven groups thus far, but the attendance has been quite popular. Again, I'd say to the name change for the Center for Active Aging and people wanting to stay healthy, well, independent, and fall prevention and staying engaged with physical fitness exercise programs. Again, the goal this year is three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty groups, excuse me, and the attendance we'll be looking at is about seventy-five hundred. Outreach, last year we had fifty. We're looking to hire an outreach coordinator. We've had nineteen so far for the first eight months, and our goal for next year will be forty. And then transportation trips, based on the various transportation opportunities that we have, we currently have a little over fifty-eight thousand trips for the first eight months, and our goal is about eighty thousand for this year and also for next Recreation leisure, recreation leisure, as well as creative and fitness programs, portioned that our new recreation coordinator just started a couple of weeks ago, so we're very excited about that. Fiscal year eighteen, we had two thousand four hundred and sixty hours with over twenty-two thousand people in attendance. Thus far this year, it's nine hundred and seventy-five hours with a little over eighteen thousand individuals in attendance. And then for fiscal year nineteen, the goal will be two thousand hours as well as twenty-four thousand people in attendance. For referrals, that's referrals that either we refer to our own center as it relates to services and programs, outside services within the community, depending on the needs. Last year, we accomplished eight hundred and ninety-seven. This year, for the first eight months, six hundred and fifty. Our goal for this year, fiscal year eighteen, as well as nineteen, is nine hundred. Our social service appointments that we have with individuals, and that's really anybody, but primarily focused on sixty and over, ninety, I'm sorry, we accomplished nine hundred and three, yes, last year. Currently, we're at five twenty-nine, and our goal will be about nine twenty-five. I mentioned about the meals earlier, and then the preschool services also. We are training mentorship program for students from Kaiser University, FAU, FIU, Barry University, nursing student, health administration students. In addition, we have a multitude of volunteer opportunities on our campus. And this slide, the performance measure specifically, tells you about our Alzheimer's Daycare Center, and I'm just, in the interest of time, going to just indicate, right now, we presently, in the last eight months, have served sixty-two individuals and their caregivers with over thirty-three thousand hours of services, and the goal next year will be about sixty. Fortunately, we didn't, we sustained the cut, so we'll be able to continue to maintain our services at the level that we have been. The same thing for case management, as well as caregiver training and support, and in our multicultural daycare center, that's a small program, we're actually funded for about ten, and currently we have eleven individuals. And then screening and assessment, you'll see that's a little bit lower, and primarily because the Department of Elder Affairs and Aging and Disability Resource Center has revised the way that we accomplish those goals. The next couple of slides, we just primarily talk about our program and service enhancements. We're going to continue to develop community partnerships with various organizations, maintain and expand our existing public-private partnerships, continue to promote education and training for our wonderful team of professionals that we work with, and most importantly, continued education and advocacy with local legislators regarding the value and importance of our funding and how it impacts the lives of individuals specifically that have Alzheimer's disease and their caregivers. We'll be expanding our volunteer opportunities with more professional individuals that are now getting into, retired, going into the next chapter of their life after they have retired. We'll also continue to develop joint activities and program along with shared space between the Center for Active Aging and Parks and Rec. We've already started to do that with the aquatics pool on Tuesdays and Thursdays, as well as a couple of dances that we've had at some of the community centers, but more so as we continue to plan for our redevelopment project. We'll continue to assess our programs to meet the changing needs of our community, and we will continue to research and plan to apply for various grant opportunities. We're very happy to have Maria Coman onboard so that we can continue to sustain our services and continue to enhance the delivery of our services. We'll also expand our intergenerational programs, and we'll continue with ongoing mentorship programs and our evidence-based studies. We're partnered with FAU for Cheer Yoga and Osteoarthritis. There was just an article out about that related to, maybe it's just the cheer and yoga, that we can help somebody's pain that has arthritis, and we're working now with an FAU study on nutrition related to the value of protein. I'm sorry, the next, a little bit back. This particular slide, I'm going to actually elaborate on this page, which primarily shows you the different divisions within the Department of Active Aging, which is Administration. You'll see an increase of fourteen point eight percent that primarily accounts for what was mentioned earlier by our city manager, the community participation through the Aging and Disability Resource Center, as well as the Northeast Focal Point Concert Board, made up of about, it's up about seventy-two thousand of that dollars, so really in that area, really went up about four percent, but the community participation from those two areas are now part of the Department of Active Aging. The Center for Active Aging is a negative twenty-two point seven percent. However, as I mentioned earlier, the Transportation Division was taken from the Center for Active Aging, formerly the Senior Center, is now has their own division under Transportation, and that is up sixteen point eight percent. So in actuality, between those two, it actually has gone down approximately seven percent. The Alzheimer's Daycare Center percent change from eighteen nineteen is five point one percent, and then the preschool, two point five percent, and the insurance costs have gone up a little bit under the non-departmental, which is two point three percent. So overall, from fiscal year eighteen to fiscal year nineteen, the request is zero point, I'm sorry, point zero three eight percent, which is one thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. This slide primarily talks about the annual budget for fiscal year nineteen, which is three million one hundred and eighty-six dollars, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and you'll see some of the revenue source, approximately nine hundred thousand dollars from intergovernmental resources, seventy-eight thousand for outside some areas that we can charge or fee for services, miscellaneous revenue of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and then the city general fund at one point five million, with a cash carry over four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. I'm almost wrapping up. The infrastructure redevelopment project, which is, of course, one of the goals of the great city of DFL Beach, we're very excited for the design and build and working with Walters, Akari and Associates. This is one of the preliminary renderings that is up on the slide. Goal will always be to remain operational throughout the project and phase in the project and working, again, with joint activities and program with Parks and Recreation. And we certainly thank the city of DFL Beach for the twelve million dollar revenue bond, and the CASA board has committed one hundred thousand dollars for interior furnishings. And thank you for a bright new day and a bright future for the Center for Active Aging, particularly as the population continues to age in Broward County. We will see those people that are fifty-five to sixty-five, be sixty-five to seventy-five, and so on and so forth. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner? Commissioner Norton?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. You may have addressed this, and I may not have heard it, but when we're talking about the performance measures, and, you know, it seemed like there was a trend that in two thousand seventeen, we were able to do more than we were able to do in eighteen, but then you hoped that in nineteen, we're going to get back to a little bit more like seventeen, and even a little bit more than seventeen. So is there a reason for the dip in most of, I can't even read on this little page?
Actually, most of it is only because it's eight months. We've only gave you from October one for eight months, so it's not a full year. But the goal that you see in fiscal year nineteen is actually the goal that we hope to accomplish, and I strongly believe that with our team of wonderful professionals, we'll be able to accomplish that goal.
Okay, so, yeah, two-thirds of the year.
Really, at last, we gave you what we've accomplished so far. The estimate will be with the two thousand and nineteen, so for example, on this slide for recreation, the goal will be two thousand hours. That's probably one of the only ones we may not be able to accomplish because we haven't had a recreation coordinator, but the others, the referrals, we're at six fifty right now, and the goal is nine hundred, so we should be able to accomplish that.
Okay, so I'm really not comparing apples and apples. I'm carrying two-thirds of a basket to a full basket, the whole year.
Correct, we gave you what was actually accomplished as of June first, October one to June first, ended on a Friday.
Okay, that helps me understand that. Thank you.
Certainly, sorry for the confusion.
Commissioner, anyone else? Chris Shergrowski?
Can you go back to the grants slide, please? Number seven in your presentation. The grants?
It says, it shows grants here, I'm sorry.
There we go.
It takes a time.
On the first line going across under the comments, is that really a twelve-passenger Toyota Corolla?
No, that was a mistake. I'm so sorry about that. I don't know how that happened. It's actually one sixteen-passenger bus with two wheelchair tie-downs, one twelve-passenger bus with two wheelchair tie-downs, and the Toyota Corolla.
I thought it was like a clown car.
Yeah, sorry about that. That was a typo.
I wish that was the only question that I had. Can you talk a little bit about the challenges you're having? You touched on a little bit with state funding in particular. I know this was especially challenging, your view. Can you touch on that just a little bit, you know, more in-depth for those that may be attending tonight?
Certainly, I, you know, as we all know, times are changing, but I truly believe there is a bright new future ahead for us, not only with the new building, but with other opportunities, whether it be with grant opportunities, community partnerships. The federal government money is primarily has stayed the same. The state money is always a challenge, particularly as it relates to money that's non-recurring. And our Alzheimer's Disease Initiative funding through the state due to various changes that have happened, and we had a very challenging year statewide as it relates to the various hurricanes that impacted everywhere in our entire state, as it relates to the tragedy that happened at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, the fact that we do need more security and safety at schools. We were one of three different Alzheimer's, and, you know, top-notch Alzheimer's centers, I will have to say, within the state of Florida that unfortunately sustained cuts, so it's a hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. We went, of course, to the Aging and Disability Resource Center to see if they can come up with some money, also went to the CASA board. I know the commission, particularly, maybe Bill Gans has been very supportive with his legislative connections throughout the state. This just happened like that overnight. We had caregivers that typically call, it was just something that we didn't know that was going to happen. It happened. We will be vigilant, as we always have, and be proactive. We'll be working with the Rubin Group, lobbyist, starting in September. We will be going to Tallahassee to advocate for the funding, meeting with people locally, but it depends on what the priority is and the emphasis is. And unfortunately, what we have seen is people occasionally do not understand the impact of Alzheimer's disease, or that older people just need a little help, a little safety net, in order for them to continue to remain at home in the community with supportive services and to remain independent, rather than placing them into a facility which can cost upward to about seventy-two thousand dollars a year. So I think it's an education advocacy process that needs to happen. I will have to say the CASA board, as well as the Aging and Disability Resource Center, was, you know, happy to give us additional support, and I know that the city manager also had asked that for from the city commission if that cut did come through. But we, it's going to be an ongoing uphill battle. There was just a report that was put out by three major funders in Broward County, Community Foundation of Broward, Jewish Federation, as well as the United Way of Broward County as it relates to the Silver Tisami, related to the fact that we need to have a stronger safety net to help people, that we're going to see more and more people that are going to be socially isolated, and as well as they're unlimited, have limited resources for services, so we need to build a better safety net. And I think we're going to see a lot more grant opportunities from those private foundations rather than from the government that we should have accessibility. We already have built those relationships, we have a successful track record. The Community Foundation grant that I mentioned this evening is for forty-five thousand for fostering awareness specifically for people eighty and over. However, we, the first grant we ever got with them was twenty thousand, or twenty-five thousand, or twelve thousand, and every year we've been able to increase it. So I don't know if I answered your question.
And then some, yes. I appreciate the additional detail. And the last, I think it's the last, well, it's not the last slide, the numbers slide, the one, two, three, four, fifth from last?
This one?
Yes, correct. Now, your budget wasn't broken out that way last year, correct? So it's kind of hard to match it up apples to apples, but the bottom line, at the bottom there, is that it's a less than one percent increase. Is that correct?
That is correct. And if you go back to this slide, if I go back to this slide, I know I went through it quickly, you see the Center for Active Aging, formerly the Senior Center. We had Transportation, which was the much smaller Transportation Division primarily for people over the age of sixty in the senior population. Then we, in fiscal year eighteen, we added the Transportation Division. So it's almost kind of a little bit of a wash, but not really, because we took on a couple employees from Parks and Rec, and we're doing all the transportation for all ages, whether it be the college tours, whether it be the after-school program, the special events, and so on and so forth. So to answer your question, yes, there is a point zero three eight percent increase, a little over twelve hundred dollars.
But I think the slide before, the bar graph shows, kind of puts it into perspective, so. But that's it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just on that, I'm sorry. Mary Gans?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so the reason why we moved Transportation and the buses under Okay, yeah, so the reason why we moved Transportation and the buses under Center for Active Aging is to get rid of redundancy of management. It's better to just have one central source for all of our transportation needs, and again, it's what Ms. Petty was talking about, stitching together these departments where they don't look like, well, I need my own transportation, because I'm Parks and Rec, and this is for summer camps. That's part of the reason why we did that. And there, even though we moved them from Parks, there really wasn't an increase in the overall general fund budget. Everything remains static when we did that this current fiscal year. Sorry, vice mayor.
That's okay.
Vice mayor?
Thank you. Two things.
Certainly.
One, how come at my age I can't do that cheer yoga?
You can do that cheer yoga, because in addition to the grant, we have a cheer yoga for people that are just sixteen and over, and I, you're always welcome.
Good, thank you. Next thing is, I've been talking with, can't remember his name, Transportation's Zarath for Broward County.
Chris Walton, Mr. Walton?
Chris Walton, about bus shelters. And I'd like to see us move forward on that this year, because if nothing makes me madder than on a hot day or rainy day, I have seniors waiting on the bus where there is no shelter. Case in point, at the corner of Fifteenth and Dixie Highway, I know there's a city bus shelter there, but our bus stops, and there are old people sitting on little carts, or whatever. And I've talked to Chris, and I told him not only on his line, but he should be able to help us, and he agreed. He should be able to help us to get some bus shelters, because he does provide us with buses to go around, the neighborhood buses. And so if we could look into that to see where we need, and maybe it'll come up on the areas tour, I don't know, where we need some shelters, so that people, the elderly can stand out and wait on the transportation to come.
Correct, and certainly we can...
Actually, I'm sorry, Donna, I can answer that quickly, because Eric just shot me an email. So yeah, we're already working with the Broward County Transit with Mr. Walton on that, and also Tom Good. So when you met with me about a month ago, they took it over. So sorry, Donna, but yeah.
No problem. We actually have added more bus stops for that reason, and the main thing with the shelters and the bus benches, and I know that Eric and Tom are both working on that, is we just need to make sure that it's safe.
Yes.
Because at that particular location, we've gone out to look at, it's not safe the way that it is, but it's also not safe or protected for them without having a shelter. So you're a hundred percent correct. So we're working in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Could we go to the next slide, please?
Sure.
So based on some of the movement that happened with transportation, still, transportation is down, correct? There's been a decrease in the transportation budget?
No.
Is that what I'm understanding? Because it was pulled out of the Center for Active Aging, right?
It was pulled out of the Center for Active Aging, but that budget did not go down.
Okay.
When we transferred over last year, we needed to transfer over, we transferred the personnel, however, we needed to transfer over some of the costs.
Okay. Has the, has the request for more transportation for our vulnerable population out there increased, or has it decreased?
The requests...
To clarify, in case I wasn't clear, and I apologize, areas like the Palms and places like that, that have, while they're in circulation with transportation, has there been a, I've heard a great deal of requests that we need more transportation for our vulnerable population. Is that accurate? Is that what you're hearing also, or you feel that we're kind of maintaining status quo?
There's always more needs for transportation. We provide transportation to all the government housing facilities in Deerfield Beach every hour and the hour, Monday through Friday. Occasionally, there are special requests that come through. When special requests come through of that nature, usually it ends up being a fee for service, because we can't just say we're going to provide transportation for you without opening it up for everybody else that's in the community. So we have had some of those different requests. We try to accommodate them on one of our transportation buses that we already have a funding source for.
Okay. I would be inclined to increase the transportation budget to be able to service more people, because the need is there from what, during the hurricane, as we get out more into the communities, or talking to people out there, that need is there. So that's something, maybe not this budget, but certainly something I'd like to take a look at, what the demand is compared to what we're able to meet in our current budget, and potentially increase the budget for that coming up, because I think the need is there. And that's something I've heard loud and clear.
The number one need in Broward County for any senior is transportation. Number two is affordable housing. So absolutely, there is definitely a need there. We've been fortunate to be able to meet the majority of the needs. And Broward County, I know, is looking into a surtax to even add some more community buses, shuttles. We have two now, the Deerfield Beach Express, one and two.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, actually, if I could just, again, while this division did increase subsequent in the general fund and Parks and Recreation, I just want to make sure that went down for transportation over there, so it shifted. Just quickly, not to be Debbie Downer here, but there are a couple policy issues for future consideration that the commission will potentially have to take after fiscal year twenty or so, and that's dealing with the preschool. I know that Mr. Francoz has brought it up in the past about, we seem to have decline in enrollment there, so that's an area that you just need to keep in the back of your mind, that if the costs are not there to sustain it, you're either going to have to increase from somewhere else to make up that difference. The other thing, and again, I don't like bringing this up, but you know, I feel obligated that I have to due to what's happening with the town of Hillsborough Beach, especially with what they just did to us late last week with another, trying to submit a second opposition and which further extends the artificial reef, and apologize for the public, because this, we've not talked about this, because this is litigation, but once again, I know that Ms. DeFranzo with the Northeast Focal Point and her board, and she's went to them, and they really want to continue to have it, have the cuisine of the region at the Hillsborough Yacht Club. And I feel that that is probably the only commercial tax base that the town of Hillsborough Beach has, and just feel obligated that, you know, from the staff, from my perspective, they're going to be suing us later this year, the town of Hillsborough Beach, over an issue that clearly has nothing, and again, I won't get into it, Anthony, but that can cost us in excess of two and a half million dollars. Now, they are playing games with our ability to put in an artificial reef, which is nowhere near this area, and that may cost us a grant. And Mr. Gresik and Mr. Bard's tomorrow night, in their presentation, will talk about that. So I brought this up last year, and what I'd like is at least some direction from the city commission, so I can go meet with her board, with Ms. DeFranzo, to say, yeah, go ahead and have it there, or no, we don't want to have it there. And again, I hate bringing it up in this venue, but this is a policy consideration for the budget.
Okay. Any other commission comments for Parkman?
Just one comment, Mr. Nader. I understand, and Vicki, you should be aware of this, if you, excuse me, I'm not always ready aware, Broward County has decided that for three-year-olds, they're not, no longer going to allow them to go into school at three years old, like they do now. And that may have an impact on your program in terms of an increase in children, so we need to prepare for that. If that is what, well, it's not, if that is what, that is what they're going to do. They have slapped their three-year-old program, so you may, you know, want to see what's on the horizon and how we can help those children out.
Will do.
Mr. Francoz, the decline in the preschool numbers, does that have, what do you think the reason for that is? Is that the competition with BPK? Is that, quite frankly, the condition of our facilities, and doesn't make it appealing for people that want to bring people there? Or what do you think the reason is for the decline in the preschool numbers?
I believe that it's competition, and we don't have a state yacht facility, although anybody that brings their children to the preschool are very happy with the services and the programs and the exposure that they get to various populations. We're very cautiously diverse, as well as intergenerationally diverse campus.
In my opinion, having been there and seen the graduations and the people who participate, you do an outstanding job with your program. The facility is something that I would imagine, as someone who's looking to bring their child there, they're going to take a look at it and realize that they would prefer something that's in the twentieth, twenty-first century compared to what we have. So we hope that, while we understand that the numbers might be down now, we, I believe that a new facility is going to go, go a long way to making people feel comfortable about having their children there.
Well, let me just clarify, the new, for the new Department of Active Aging facility, we're not anticipating having a preschool in that, in that particular building. The purpose, as we continue to, you know, just as transportation has become more efficient and effective in serving the needs of our population related to the quality of life, one of the goals of the city commission, I believe the same thing will happen specifically, possibly at the Cedar McKees complex with the new Johnny Tigna building. And we still will be providing transportation, as well as having an opportunity for them there, and I could see even more and more field trips between the seniors and all ages, not just the three-year-olds, primarily sort of the four and five-year-olds, because that's what BPK covers, but I think all ages. So the new building will not be having an, will not be having a preschool, but we will continue to do intergenerational programs.
So you don't, so what we're building there, that really won't impact that, if we can't look to see our numbers go up for a new facility then? Since you're not going to have a program?
I would see an increase in the number of older people that will be participating, and of course, the number of people that will be volunteering, but as it relates to the preschool, there's no plan, there's not any plans currently in the new building for a preschool.
Okay, no problem. This, if you're looking for direction for when it comes to the cuisine of the region, I think, I don't like to get into the parochial point of view as, well, they did this, let's do this, back and forth. I don't necessarily agree with that. For the most part, you know, the people get feathers ruffled. We have good relationships with our neighboring cities, Pompano, Boca Raton, Coconut Creek. This is an exception. And in this particular case, it, I understand the city manager's point, and while I'm normally not inclined to go along with that, I did have discussions with members of that board last year, when we were looking to request a location change, that we said, let's do it for this year, but we need to consider a new location for that, for this upcoming year. I would hope they would still hold to that and be looking at alternatives. There are a lot of fine places in Deerfield Beach we can have, and I understand it's a unique location, but considering the current atmosphere, the way it is, I, it makes sense for us to want to support businesses in our community and look at things a little bit different for that, for that city, and how we interact with it.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's my opinion, so I don't want to be outspoken. Thank you, Donna.
Okay, thank you very much.
So at the risk of committing death by power pouring, I'm going to try and go through the slides quickly and get to the meat of the presentation tonight. So we're going to talk about our department overview, our few accomplishments, highlight a few performance measures, our budget overview, and then some future considerations that we'd like to bring up tonight. So just to briefly talk about our divisions, we're comprised of the Administration and Community Events Division, that division is combined. We have our Parks Maintenance, which is our largest division, takes care of all our parks and meetings and the public right of way. Athletics and Aquatics is Ryan's division, that oversees all sports activities, and also the Aquatic Center. Our Recreation Division handles programming at all our community centers, oversees the Tennis Center, and also the Teen Center, and also Summer Camp, don't forget about Summer Camp. Then we have our Waterfront Pier Division, and then finally, our Cemetery Division. As Ms. Petty said earlier today, we do everything from birth to burial, if you want to look at it, our department. So that's all the divisions that we have in our department. Just highlight quickly our inventory. Most of you have seen this before. The only thing I want to sort of highlight on here is that we now have seven fitness station parks, that's one of the accomplishments this year. We've gone from four to three this year, added one to Villages, one at OMRC, and one at Southeast Second Street Park. And so we've hit our complement on those fitness stations, and they seem to be very, very popular. So let's talk a little bit about some fiscal year accomplishments. Top of the list is obtaining two million dollars in grants to begin work on the Brent Hilda Richardson Knows Memorial Park, and I hope some of you have gone by there to take a look at the progress that has been made in that property over there. We're really excited about that. We hope to complete that dish by the end of this, or beginning of fiscal year nineteen. We also did a re-landscaping of East Hillsborough Corridor and the Cove, and placed some extra emphasis on landscaping the city entry points. We thought that was important, too, doing monuments and landscaping for when people are coming into the city. We did three new playgrounds this year, as I mentioned, three new fitness stations. We also did an expansion of our Park Ranger Program. We now have it fully staffed, five, or budgeted for five Rangers, that we can now run two shifts, seven days a week, which is a big benefit to what we're doing. Some of the other accomplishments, the events out west. We had two major events out west, which is one of the directors from the commission. We had Boot and Bourbon Country Music Festival out at Choir Waters Park, over two thousand in attendance at that event. Our Sippin' Stroll that occurred out at the Arboretum at Constitution Park, sold out. The tickets, we, it was a paid event, and it was sold out, and it was a tremendous night, and a great first, first shot out the door for that, that event. Our event sponsorship continues to grow. The money, money we're coming in for events sponsors has up over forty percent thus far this year, and it's continued to climb. Also, one thing I want to announce is a new event that's coming up in August, our Big Buck Music Event. We are very fortunate to be in partnership with South Florida's own DJRE, who's going to come in and help us to produce this world-class music event over at Ovidem McKees Recreational Complex. We're excited about what's going to happen there, something that we've been working on for quite a bit. You'll be hearing more information about who we're performing and all the, all the things that Ally's been working very, very hard to bring together, but real excited about having that event. It's going to be the first one, and we really like the idea of the Big Buck Music Festival, so we hope you'll be looking forward to that. Like to highlight a few programming highlights this year, because it's a big part of what we do. This year, we added some enhancement programs to our after-school programs. So in addition to doing after-school, you could also sign up for enhancement enrichment programs, and we offer swim lessons, we offer tennis lessons. We also offered archery, and we had several students sign up to learn to, what is it, arch? To shoot a bow and arrow, I guess is the proper term. And that's a picture, you see some of the kids out there at the, at the park learning. And they got pretty good at it, and the staff took three of our youth out to a tournament in Deerfield Beach, and all three placed. We had a first, second, and a fourth, and they're so excited about it, we're going to expand the program, and we're looking to actually host a tournament here in Deerfield Beach in the next fiscal year. We enhanced Special Needs Program. One of the things we believe, we want, we believe in social equity. We want to make sure that everyone has equal opportunity for recreation in this city. So we had our first Special Needs Buddy Summer Camp this year, and I got a very, very wonderful email from a parent, just thanking the staff for doing this, and she had not seen her son come home and smile and be happy, because he never had any friends, that's what she shared with me. But through the summer camp, he has made friends. And so that's what we don't want to deprive anyone, so that's a big thing that we're going to continue to focus on. Our teens have a new program, it's Teen Center, Concept Creations, a program that allows teens to design and... program that allows teens to design and then manufacture their own T-shirts. The idea is that we want to not just teach them recreational stuff, but teach them some skills that they can use and develop as they grow. We hope to see a couple of entrepreneurs come out of that group. Hugh has started a new walking club at the beach for adults, 50 years and over, correct?
Fifty plus, yes.
Fifty-plus walking club. And it's going to meet on the weekends, and he has decided, asked that he wanted to have celebrity leaders for the walkers. So, just letting our commission know that they expect a call from us to come out and lead one of our walks on a Saturday morning.
I'm not 50 yet.
I'll be there.
And also want to highlight our continued robotic and co-tech classes. We're offering co-tech classes right here at York Tech this coming fall. So, there's just a few to highlight. Let's go over a few of our performance measures. One of the ones I want to highlight is our program satisfaction. It's a new measure for us, that we want to know how we're doing. So, we're surveying those who are taking our programs and attending our events. And we have an estimate this year that we're going to hit 85% customer satisfaction for our programs. Our goal is 90%, but our long-term goal is to get to 95%. That's, I want to be our baseline for everything that we do. We want to have a 95% satisfaction rate. I also like to highlight that our rentals are continuing to increase, partly due to this new facility we have here. And it's also, you know, created an increase in our revenue, which I'll touch on just a little bit later. Talk about our city sponsored core events. Those events continue to rise. We anticipate getting up to 108 this year, a target of 110. We may be tapped out without some additional funding. But that's one of the things that we're going to be working towards in terms of sponsorship for those kind of events. Our pier visits, I want to highlight that. I really anticipated a bigger drop in attendance at the pier. As most of you know, the tee was damaged during Hurricane Irma, it was shut down. We got it back up and finally got it fully operated again. So, the attendance has started to climb back up, partly because Pompano Beach Pier went under renovation. So, we have a lot of those visitors coming from Pompano came down to us as residents. But we're starting to see the attendance starting to track back up. We actually think we might surpass what we had anticipated when it first shut down. So, I want to give some credit to Hugh and his staff over there for keeping, keep pushing them over there at the pier. Grant funding, I want to highlight that. This year, we, $568,000 increase over last year. That was primarily due to the funding we received from CDBG grant funding to put the new playground over at Johnny McKeaton Park, which we're hoping to do a ribbon cutting in the next couple of weeks, which will be the first park we put in that has a special needs amenity. There's a swing in that park and the playground specifically designed for special needs children. Those who do not have the physical capability to hold a swing. They have never been able to experience what most children experience in a swing. Those children will be able to experience that at Johnny McKeaton once we open that playground. Now, we have a ton more performance measures, but I just wanted to highlight those tonight. So, talk a little bit about the budget. Our budget consists of overall reduction of 1% from the current fiscal year. It's about a net of about $123,488. I did want to highlight some of the line items where we took some decreases from. But the big jump was in park maintenance, $619,000 for park amenities and equipment purchases. We've been fortunate at Deerfield Beach over the last four years to completely turn over all of our park facilities. Put in new playgrounds, new benches, new equipment. But we have to point out to begin to pull some of that back and do a more incremental replacement each year. So, we felt it was time to sort of bring some of those dollars back and repurpose them elsewhere. But we also want to make sure that we didn't, that the budget was a true, accurate budget and not just inflate numbers, for want of a better word. So, we reduced that. Now, we were still having money to do some playground replacements and some vehicle replacements. It just won't be as large as we've done in the past. We reduced some direct expense to community events, about $69,000. Hopefully, that sponsorship would help to compensate for some of that reduction. And we also reduced Summer Camp for over $100,000, and that was for two reasons. One, we no longer have to operate a camp at Choir Waters Elementary School. The school system is operating the camp, so that we don't have to staff that camp. And two, we have a hybrid model now for Summer Camp, which means we have some camps that we run in-house with staff, some we run with contractors and professional instructors, which costs us a lot less money to operate. So, we're still going to be serving the same amount of kids. It's just that we don't have to do it, spend quite as much money to get it done. Some of the line item increases I want to highlight. We did have to add to the budget $36,000 in landscape median maintenance for the new FDOT project. FDOT is installing new medians that runs from Dixie Highway East to Federal. If you've seen those going in, at some point, soon, they're going to turn those over for our maintenance. So, we had to add the cost of that for our budget. We're also funding some additional dollars for park plans for Pioneer Trail and for Campbell Shanter. And Pioneer Trail actually is what we're calling, our hope, our vision is to have a linked park system from Riverview to Pioneer to Bran Hilda Richardson Knos. So, we want to sort of plan that out together rather than do it individually. The idea that we've been talking, since I've been here with Eric and the city manager, about having linked park systems, that's, we feel this is the best opportunity to actually get started in doing that.
I'm sorry, David.
Yes.
Mr. Miller. Just quickly, for those that may not know, because many people don't know that we have Riverview Park, which was deeded to the county several decades ago. It's on the Hillsborough River, just a little to the northwest of Pioneer Park. So, when he's talking about Riverview Park, it's, right now, it's just undeveloped land on the Hillsborough River. Sorry.
Northeast six port, I believe, is where it sits.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for that. In addition, we're going to be investing $60,000 to redo the field at Oviedo McKeaton this year, and also some improvements to Pioneer View Cemetery to do some repair work to the monuments and the structures over there, to do some automation of the data. Those are the things that we're sort of highlighting for increases this year. So, we'll take a look at the budget. As I mentioned, it's the overall 1% reduction from FY '18. Administration and Community Events has a change of plus 9.2%. As been mentioned before, primarily that's increase in personnel costs and healthcare. But it's also a rightsizing of overtime. We budget overtime for every community event that we do, and we've sort of overspent that the last couple years. So, we want the right size of budget, so that was increased to make sure that we're budgeting correctly for that. The big reduction is in the park maintenance budget, as I mentioned previously. And like the majority of that is that we just will not be funding for those major developments and equipment purchases this coming year. Athletics and Aquatics, slight reduction. And then Recreation, same. Summer Camp, as I mentioned, is a 20% reduction, but that's due to the reduction of how we're operating for Summer Camp this year. The pier has a, shows a change of 17.9% increase. A lot of that is the new, well, not new, but the healthcare costs. And also, we're converting to part-time pier attendants to a full-time assistant waterfront manager to assist out in the operations of the pier and the waterfront. I think most of you know it's a seven-day operation, 24 hours a day during the weekend, and we just have one full-time manager out there. And that person's also responsible for managing the Deerfield Beach Cafe contract and also the beach amenity contract. And so, we felt it was best use of those dollars to have a full-time person who can assist on the off shifts, to keep an eye on what's going on rather than the part-time staff. So, that attributes to part of the increase. The cemetery, although it shows a 21% increase, the amount of money is not that large. But it is for the 20-plus thousand dollars for the increase and for the cost in personnel and the cola and the healthcare hours allocated. And our revenue, we are projecting an increase in revenue. We're trending about 5% ahead this year over last year. So, we're going to project a little higher for FY '19. The increase is primarily due to the increase in facility rentals and for admissions and for resales at the pier. The merchandise resale operation's going really, really well at the pier. I think for our budget, we should be at around 70-some odd percent, I think, spent or earned. And both those line items are in the 90s of catching, of receiving money currently. So, we anticipate that as an increase as well. So, for FY '19, what do we have planned? As I mentioned, we got to take over maintenance of the new medians on Hillsborough. We're looking forward to the completion of the Bran Hilda Richardson Knos Memorial Park. We'll be adding a dedicated maintenance position specifically for that park. It won't be the new cost, we will not be hiring any new staff. We'll be getting the staff to be reallocated from another department to give us that FTE. We will start the planning process for Pioneer and Campbell Shanter Parks. We sent a press release today that we will also begin to, as a custom service measure, we'll begin selling beach parking stickers at our recreation facilities to give residents more options to purchase rather than just going to City Hall. This past year, we spent a lot of time in getting our rec-track system squared away, up and running. Rec-track is our registration system for collecting money, registering participants, doing rentals. So, we're moving over to what we call the main track side, which is how we track what we do with our maintenance staff. So, that system will be getting upgraded this coming year. And one of the things we'll be implementing is a mobile application for field staff, so that staff in the field will be able to, with their phone, city-issue cell phone, be able to record hours worth, record the data for what's going on, submit work orders. So, we're going to need to bring them in just to complete that kind of information or to even buy more computers, we'll just be able to do it from their cell phone. We have about 16 new bike racks that will be going up on the beach this year. As I mentioned about the accessible swings that we're doing at Johnny McKeaton, we're going to do three additional parks and put the same amenity there at Crystal Heights South Villages, and I believe Mayo Howard is the third one that we're going to be having. So, we're going to have them all around the city for people with children who have special needs. We're going to do a playground shade upgrade at Crystal Heights Park. That will be the last park, so we've done the complete rotation of upgrading our parks. And then the new pickleball court is going in at Southeast, that should be Southeast, thank you, Avenue Park. And it's a partnership with Deerfield Beach Island Community Association. They're going to help us fund to build the new pickleball park out there. And as I mentioned, we'll be converting two part-time positions to a full-time assistant waterfront pier manager to assist in the operations out there. Future consideration, I know fees is always a dirty word, but I got to bring it up. We need to take a look, continue to, we continue to put focus on our user fees. We still need to bring a lot, many of them up to market rate. We're still behind in many, many areas. One of the things I'd like for you to consider is, you know, currently, we do not charge a fee for Sullivan Park and Pavilion Rental. When the park was open, the decision was made not to charge a fee. But it is so popular, we're taking reservations anyway. We had over 63 reservations thus, well, last fiscal year. And we're probably trending higher than that for this year. If we only get one reservation per week at $250 per reservation, we could raise about $12,000 revenue. So, that's something we'd like to consider doing. We also like to consider some admission for some events. Of course, not our big 4th of July or anything like that. But we've seen that the Boot and Bourbon and that the Sippin' Stroll, people paying for, that does what people do pay for. We're not charged for, you know, small community events. But certain events, we'd like to be able to consider charging admission for to help cover some of the costs. And now, it's not all about the fees. It's also, we also like to consider, how do we help those who can't afford to pay? So, we'd like to develop this coming year a fee assistance policy or program to help those. And you know, that sort of ties into my last bullet point, is the official partnership program. I think I'd like for us to consider having a overall partnership program for the city. I don't have no problem in taking that on, but I think it could be multiple departments across the city. Something that we can brand and market to give people an opportunity, whether it's to adopt a park, adopt a median, to sponsor events, programs, to help with program costs for kids who may have, may be struggling to take part in the program. And I think that'd be a great thing, if we could market that, we could brand that and create something. And I have no problem trying to spearhead that, that's something we want to take a look at. We do quite a bit, but it's sort of haphazard. And, you know, we'll talk to people as we see them, or we go after specific. But if we could put together something that's really, really nice that we can sort of market to not just the business community, but the not-for-profits, something I'd like for us to consider. And I just want to say this, that I know fees are always down, you know, that's the issue. But when you look at Deerfield Beach as it relates to national standards, we recover in Parks and Recreation about 11% of our costs through fees and charges. The national standard's about 33%. Many, many agencies do well above that. Now, I'm not saying that we should, you know, jump to that, but it's something that we need to take a look at. When a department is 90% subsidized through general fund, you know, it's not a good position to be in when economics go bad. So, I'd like for us to consider that that's not necessarily a bad thing, start moving in that direction. And I think that's my slides. So, question?
Commissioner?
I just want to say again, first of all, that I am pleased with the progress on Bran Hilda Memorial Park. I think you do great things at the park. I am totally pleased with the transformation of our teen center. We're looking at a program who, a year or two ago, we had maybe 12 teens. And now, that has grown exponentially. And I want to say to my colleagues, I agree, you know, we need to look at some of those fees or fee structure for some of the things that we do here in the city, especially since we're down in terms of the national standard, one way or the other. But one of the things that I am totally concerned about is, I'd like to see if we could do a little bit more than the swings for children with, you know, handicapping disabilities. If we could, we could work on that, one way or the other. Your achievements have been great today, as far as I'm concerned. I like the vitality that you brought to the Parks and Recreation and especially in terms of getting your staff to be, the morale, bringing the morale up. And that goes a long ways and says a lot about you. What I want to make sure that we do have, and I know I saw Bran Hilda there on the screen, and you mentioned it, and Mr. City Manager, if I have not said this to you, when we opened that, I have been getting calls from around the country about that park and when it's going to open. So, if you don't have monies in the budget to do a real grand opening for that particular park, we ought to see about putting some dollars away so that we can really, you know, make it what it is. Well, get the people to respond to that. And I want to be the first one, Mr. Miller, along with Representative, ex-Representative State Representative, Lynn Clark-Reed. Come on now, y'all got to join in. You, we're coming. We're coming out there on that pier to walk, seriously, okay? Now, y'all, come on, Bill, you're not here, but I'm going to be there.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
What's the weight limit on the pier?
I've been on this, so I think you're okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Commissioner Partus?
It's not a question, it's just a night.
It's not a question, it's just an idea I'd like us to think about. You're going to be working with Tambo Shanta Park?
Yes, sir.
The gentleman that brokered that deal to get us the fifty acres was Commissioner Marty Papelski. I'm going to throw out the idea that I'd like to see the park named after him, and it's just a thought for the commission to think about. He worked very hard to get us that fifty acres, and it's his district, District Three, which is now mine, and I think it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Commissioner Grasky?
If we're going to consider naming things, I'd consider the pickleball court for Joe Miller. It's a little grand, but we'll think about it. The question is on the math, in your presentation, unless I wrote the numbers down wrong, there was eight hundred thousand dollars in cuts, there was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in increases, which leaves, which is around six hundred and fifty million, excuse me, six hundred and fifty thousand, but you have a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar overall reduction in your budget. So if I do the math, that's about a half a million dollars that's unaccounted for in your presentation.
Right.
Which means there's an extra half million in increases. Where is that money?
Majority of that is the personnel that increases. There, what I did for you, and I can do it more specifically if you like, is give you the highlights where the increases and decreases are going to be in the current budget. We took a pencil to every line item in our budget, increased where we thought we needed to, decreased where we thought, based on our history of spending. So I just wanted to highlight to you where those, what I thought was the more important cuts, but we reduce things like materials to improve, there's, I mean, there's a lot of places that we sharpened our pencils, and the increase was primarily in personnel costs.
So, because that half million isn't an insignificant number, so if you can provide more detail on that, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, sure, okay.
That's all, thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
A little question, the bike racks at the beach, is that in addition to the current bike racks or to replace the?
To replace them.
Oh, no, no net more?
Well, it will end up being net more, yes, it will be.
I was hoping it'd be more total.
We got a grant to purchase those, and we got a mark painted, so we'll be ready to.
Couldn't we just put them and leave the ones we have too? I'd to encourage more bicycle. I mean, we don't have, we don't want to encourage more cars. I mean, I, my first thought is, oh, yeah, there's going to be addition, then I thought, wait, it's almost, that might look nicer, but if we want to encourage more bicycle traffic, might be an idea.
Sure, okay.
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
I hear you talk about the cemetery, and I know we're, people are dying to get there, okay? And we're running out of space, and is there, I guess I should be asking the city manager, is there a plan for us to deal with the cemetery? I know I've heard people say they've gone out to Tambo Shanta, and the cost is so prohibitive.
Yep. Well, unfortunately, there's no property to expand our current two cemeteries, and there's really no other available land that I'm aware of that could be used for a cemetery, with the exception of the forty-five acre west part of the old Tambo Shanta Golf Course, which is private. And I think that's going to be a common issue here in South Florida, is population increases, and there's more undeveloped land, and there's not very much left anyway. So right now, once we are done with that, there's nothing more. I know several years, not several years ago, probably close to fifteen years ago, I believe, Mr. Kendrick, who is Parks and Recreation Director back then, had brought forward an idea to the then-city commission about creating some mausoleums, which would go vertical and add some more spaces, but that never really made any headway with the then-city commission, and we certainly have not reviewed doing that or bringing that forward, but if that's something this commission would like for future consideration, we can certainly take a look at seeing what the cost is and whether or not we're even able to do that on, because that was fifteen years ago, I'm sure a lot of the land that was going to be set aside for that may have already been sold as plots for the deceased, so.
Yeah, I was glad to see that we have space at Pineview, for instance, for cremains, I think that's what they're called, there's a section that you have. And if we, I don't know if there are other pieces in that area that we could even consider, but if we don't plan for that now, or start the planning for that now, you know, when we do, some of us wants, want to be buried here.
Yep.
And, you know, we just need to take a look at that, see where we're going with it.
Yeah, no problem, we'll certainly evaluate that and report back to the city commission.
I too would like to see, I know when we get the right, the full budget, we'll be able to take a look at where these numbers are, but we've cuts, all the cuts that you're talking about are services that are providing, and the increases are personnel, to me, that seems pretty unbalanced, so I would like to kind of have a better understanding of that. As far as the fee increase, I'm okay with us being where we're at. I think in some areas, we need to look at, one of the concerns I have with Sullivan Park is less about charging money to rent out the pavilion, is more that the people that are kind of going there and where they haven't made reservations and they show up and kind of take it over, is how they leave it and the condition they have. We have a little more control if we do charge a fee to say they've got to leave a deposit for any damages or anything like that. I've heard reports of a lot of abuse over there by people that are using that facility, so that would be the only way, that would be kind of interested in that and figure out how we can get a better control of how they limit the damages to that park. It is a problem, it's a wonderful location. I am, as far as the other fees, I'm not as inclined to look at that, but I'm willing to look at it, but I'm not, my inclination is not to increase them, unless proven that I'm wrong. We have a park over in District Four at River Glen area, River Glen, it's the pirate ship they have over there, in which the cover, canvas cover has been missing for quite a long time. Is that in the budget to be replaced?
It's already been paid for, it just needs to be installed.
Okay.
It was scheduled to actually get done, I think, about two weeks ago, and the weather threw them behind on the schedule. There's already been orders paid where it's said have to be installed, and it should be any day.
Okay, so that was in the, that's in the current budget?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. As far as the performance measures, employee training, have we increased that or provided any more employee training?
In terms of funding?
Well, your goals for seventeen and eighteen were to provide employee training to encourage employee development, are we continuing with that?
Yes, we are.
Renovation of the playgrounds, you said you were able to do that. Do we have a departmental master plan highlighting prioritizing areas that need landscaping and irrigation improvements?
It's about ninety percent complete.
Okay. And enhance the overall landscape of the beach, ballfields and parks?
As part of the plan, yes.
Okay. And improve customer service to residents through prompt response, communication with residents, I think you talked about it with your survey, would show as far as customer satisfaction?
That's satisfaction with the programs and events, the response time is ours is twenty-four hour response.
Okay.
That's what we aim for.
Improve customer service through enhanced ERP system to process invoices and refunds more timely, are we being able to accomplish that goal?
Probably about ninety percent.
Okay.
Not quite, not quite a hundred percent. Part of our challenge is that bill sometime gets mailed to the, don't get company direct to us, by the time we find them, okay? But about ninety percent, we're get our bills and get them processed.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's it. Thank you.